Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting of the Santa Clara City Council and Stadium Authority concurrent meeting to order. May I have a confirmation of a quorum Assistant City Clerk?
Confirming your quorum, Madam Mayor, and noting for the record that we have Councilmember Park and Councilmember Hardy who will be participating remotely this evening.
Thank you. We have three items of closed session. City Attorney, would you like to read those?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. Item 1A is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Jane Rowe versus Doe, one at all, including City of Santa Clara. Item 1B is public employee performance evaluation, title City Attorney, that also includes instructions to negotiators with respect to that position, the City Attorney position. Item 1C is conference with labor negotiators with respect to employee organization, unit number 10, Public Safety Non-S sworn Employees Association, with the city representatives as identified on the agenda. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on any closed session items? I don't see any here in the chambers. Assistant City Clerk, do we have any online?
We do not have any hands online.
All right, thank you. We're going to adjourn to closed session. We'll be back at 7:00 PM.
And Madam Mayor, if I might just one quick note, I will be participating in items 1A and 1C. For obvious reasons, I will not be participating in item 1B.
Noted. Thank you.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Role call. City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For this evening, before we take role, I'd like to note for the record that Councilmember Park and Councilmember Hardy are both participating remotely under provision AB 2449 just cause. At this time, Councilmember Park is online. Councilmember Hardy is not. But Councilmember Park is participating under provision AB 2449. He is on city business, which prevents him from attending in person this evening. At this time, Councilmember Park, please disclose whether any other individuals 18 years of age or older are present in the room at your remote location and the nature of your relationship to you.
No, there is nobody here.
Thank you. If the circumstance changes during the meeting, please inform us for the record.
Understood.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hardy is not online yet, but...
May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Hardy? If she comes back, comes in, then take away the excuse.
So moved. Second.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Hardy. Motion by Councilmember Gonzalez, second by Councilmember Shaw Hall. Please register your vote. It's really loud.
I think it's a roll call though.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Park? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
And Chair Gilmore, or Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you. So with that, I will do the roll call. Councilmember, Board Member Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember, Board Member Shaw Hall?
Present.
Councilmember, Board Member Park?
Here.
Councilmember, Board Member Jane?
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Cox?
Here.
Mayor and Chair Gilmore?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The AB 23 announcement. Members of the Santa Clara Stadium Authority, Sports and Open Space Authority, and Housing Authority are entitled to receive $30 for each attended meeting. Statement of Behavioral Standards. The City of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as a presiding officer, the mayor's and chair's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation. For those attending this evening in the capacity of a registered lobbyist, we ask you to please identify yourself as such and disclose the clients and organizations that you represent. This is pursuant to City Code Section 2.155.110. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, and welcome. For today's meeting, the City Council is back in person and is conducting its meeting in a hybrid manner. The public is welcome to attend in person, and the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow participation from your home or office. Members of the public can still join via the link and or call into the Zoom meeting phone number shown on the screen now. If you would like to speak on an agenda item or during public presentations, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. As a friendly reminder, members of the public have two minutes to speak on an agenda item and three minutes on public presentations, and those are reserved for topics that are not on the agenda. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower your hand to ensure that members of the public are seeking to speak on the appropriate agenda item. So we'll now move on to the council agenda. Reports of action taken in closed session. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council did meet on all three items listed on the agenda, 1A, 1B, and 1C. I attended items 1A and 1C and can report firsthand that there was no reportable action. I did not attend item 1B by its nature. I believe there's no reportable action.
There's no reportable action on 1B.
I would ask you to confirm that. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Continuances, exceptions, or reconsiderations? Does anyone have any from the council, the staff, or the public? Councilmember Shaw Hall?
Madam Mayor, should we move the special order of business before item number two so that...
I'm doing that, but this is continuances, exceptions, reconsiderations. Do you have anything?
No, I just wanted to...
Thank you. Seeing none? Anyone online? City Clerk? Okay. We're going to take the special orders of business first before we go on to our continuances for all of your sake. So for our first item... What? Excuse me? No offense, City Attorney, no offense. For the first item, we're recognizing the incredible athletic achievements of some of our young people. We are also pleased to have members of the Santa Clara Unified School District Board here. If there's any members, you can stand up. Do we have anybody here? Oh, way back there. Is that Michelle? Michelle from the school board? This season, the Santa Clara High School baseball team won a record 29 games with the league MVP. 29 games, wow. Jaxton Chow for the, with the league MVP, Jaxton Chow, for the first time since 2005, winning their league. That's 20 years. Wow, okay. The team also won the Central Coast Section CCS baseball title for the first time in Santa Clara High School's history and finished as a runner-up in the NorCal baseball tournament. Wow. Excellent achievements that we must also, that we must also thank head coach Pedro Martinez and assistant coaches Alan Thomas, Isaiah Chavez, Alan Bonvacino, and Darren Evans for providing their guidance for these excellent players. So before I invite Coach Pedro Martinez to the podium, I'd act, I would like to ask Vice Mayor Kelly Cox, since you asked these, this team to come forward, to say a few words about them.
No, I just, parents, thanks for being here. This is just another part of the baseball journey, huh? You guys are now at city council, so through thick and thin. I know what it takes to have kids play at this level, and so this is a family and a community event. We're so fortunate that we've had like three or four Santa Clara teams here this year. It was a good year for Santa Clara sports. I've watched some of you boys grow up, and it's been such a pleasure. You're delightful and respectful and wonderful young men, and I thank you for being in council today. I know it's boring, but I hope that as civic servants, what you guys understand is that the lessons in baseball apply here and that you take these into whatever you do in the future and just continue to model for the rest of us and for the world what champions are in every setting. But thank you guys for being here for us tonight. It makes it more fun for us, for sure.
And what she really meant was, you're welcome to stay with us until midnight tonight to learn about governance and your city. But in the meantime, I'd like to invite Coach Pedro Martinez to the podium to speak and say a few words and call up the players to receive their certificates of recognition from the city. Welcome, Coach.
I just want to make sure this is on. We're good? Thank you guys for inviting us. Thank you so much. Yeah, to go off of Ms. Cox over there. Yeah, Santa Clara had a lot of teams there. I was here with the flag football team in March, so every four months, I'd like to do this again. Maybe I come by. It's like every quarterly thing. So yeah, what can I say that you haven't said? We won 29 games. That's a school record. It phenomenal. We had a 20-game win streak in the middle of all that. We won league for the first time outright, I think, in like 11 years. We had a league MVP for the first time in 20 years. Our CCS run was wild. We were down to our last out down three runs. Like, we should have lost in the first round, and then we caught magic. It was like angels in the outfield type of stuff. And we, we won the first round game. We had a big homerun from Greg Salgado on the top of the ninth to propel us to victory. And then we had to stay till midnight over at San Jose Muni with the San Jose Giants play and play another nine inning game to come victorious again with some heroics by John Kepner, who pitched a wild game that day and had the game-winning RBI. And then in the CCS final, it was the easiest of them all. We won eight to nothing, and Drew Difinderfer pitched a phenomenal game, almost had a perfect game. I think he only gave up one hit. But yeah, it was crazy. And just when you thought it was over, we had this NorCal tournament to go into, and we hosted it, and we had a walk-off win against Oakland Tech with the big hit by Zach Gallegos to walk it off. Then to highlight this trip, we had to take a four-hour bus ride to Cottonwood, California to play West Valley High School. Out there was their graduation day, and we won up there six to nothing and had another fun four-hour bus ride back for grad night because the boys had just graduated the day before. But that was just a wild ride for this team. It was magical. It was great. And the city, the community came out for us in all the CCS games. When we were at the Santa Clara University, it was just wild. I took it in, soaked it in. The community was there. We had, I think, 500 Santa Clarians there. It was awesome. And to do it for the first time in Santa Clara history, anybody who's an alumni here, this one was for you guys and for everybody out there that went to Santa Clara. I know you're a Santa Clara alum. We got it done after 150 years, finally. Baseball has a CCS champion. Do you want me to call out these names?
I have to make a correction. I was Booker High School.
Oh, I am sorry. I was told Santa Clara.
You're in my school. You know that.
Yeah, yeah, they flip over. We used to play at Washington Park where our old home was because of Booker.
So I'm glad you said Santa Clara and not Booker High School.
There you go, yeah.
Baseball, okay. No, that's great. I'm going to come down, and if, if the players would, when they get their certificate and their medal, come up here, we're going to take a big group shot, okay?
You guys hear that? You get a name called there? I got to double-check with these guys. So I'm going to go on this side. Stay out here. All right, so our first player up is, oh, I'll wait, I'll wait, I'll wait. All right, our first player up is Andrew Chaffis. All right, our next, our next player is Bruce Gibson. Charles Conley. Connor Hool. Dominic Chavaria. Drew Difinderfer. Dylan Raybar. Greg Salgado. Jaxton Chow. John Kepner. Jonathan Young. Kalani Testamali. Kyle Yumu. Nathaniel Sanchez. Ryan Trujillo. Santiago Lopez. This next name, he's in Paris, so he has a good excuse, but Sevion Thomas. And then last but not least, Zach Gallegos. He's out of, out of the country. And then Coach Al Bonvacino, Big Al.
We'll be shorter for down there.
We'll be shorter for down there.
I'm gonna go down.
This is for the photo book, okay? Right here.
Okay. Quickly, just, I wanted to say something about, you know, the team and Coach Pedro. You know, this year, from the start of the season, Coach Pedro was like, we have crazy potential with the players we have today, crazy talent, and it would be a letdown to let this team not go all the way. And although myself and everyone else here probably didn't think we would get all the way to NorCal, runner-up, I think we all knew we had it in us, and I think Coach Pedro was there to support us from the very beginning and to encourage us, to make us, let us know even after a loss, like a tough loss against Fremont, that we can, in fact, continue and have a chance at CCS, winning CCS. And so I think Coach Pedro, along with the players, played an integral part this season in the big win. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you, everyone, and congratulations to coaches and the players. You know, sports is, sports plays such an important role in our life, like it builds your character, it builds your sportsmanship, character, basically tells you how to deal with different aspects, not only the sports, but how you deal with other colleagues while we are playing with our own team as well as the opposition. So I have been in a boarding school, playing sports from fifth, sixth grade onwards, so I consider it, this a very, very important extracurricular activity. And I have two boys who are alumni of Santa Clara High School. I'll let them know the achievements you all have done. So once again, congratulations. Keep it up.
All right, and I wasn't kidding. You're welcome to stay for our meeting. It's gonna be fun and exciting, but we do have one nice, another special order of business, but if you all, if you wanna go, I'll wait like a few minutes, so you can all go. I won't, we won't take it personally. Congratulations, everyone. Congratulations. Vice Mayor Cox loves all your hair, so I just had to, I had to point that out. That's for playoffs. All right, so moving on to our next special order of business is the recognition of outgoing commissioners on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Cultural Commission, Historical and Landmarks Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Salary Setting Commission, and Senior Advisory Commission. So before the commissioners that are present come to the front, I would like to acknowledge the all 13 outgoing commissioners for their service. From the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we have Bruce Donahue, Sukrit Ganesh, Ashish Joshi, Perry T. Pennvenny, and that's all from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. From the Cultural Commission, we have Swami Krishnu Morti and Jonathan Marinaro. From the Historical and Landmarks Commission, we have Amy M. Kirby. From the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Sajid Hai. From the Salary Setting Commission, we have Donald Lawson. And from the Senior Advisory Commission, we had, we have Edmund Drozek, Tom Freitas, Judy Hubbard, and Vena Sterling. Can we all give, give them all a round of applause? Thank you for your work, and we're also grateful for your dedicated service to the city. So I'm gonna come down now for the next five commissioners that are here. Is it working? Okay, here we go. So I'm gonna ask, as I call up the commissioners, that we have a certificate for you, and then if you stand up here and we can take a group photo after. Not yet, Tom, sit down. Okay. We're gonna start, start with Sukrit Ganesh from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory We have Jonathan Marinaro from the Cultural Advisory Commission. You get a plaque as well. Edmund Drozek from the Senior Advisory Commission. Tom Freitas from the Senior Advisory Commission. Tom, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And Vena Sterling from the Senior Advisory Commission as well. Vena, congratulations. Thank you. Could I ask the council members to please come down so we may have a photo with everyone? Thank you. All right, again, thank you all for your service to the city. We hope you still stay involved. Thank you. City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to note for the record that Councilmember Hardy has now joined the meeting. And as I noted earlier, she is participating under AB 2449. However, her address is on the agenda, and due to some technical issues and difficulties, she was not able to post her agenda on time. Therefore, she is under just cause, providing care to her grandchildren, which is preventing her from attending the meeting this evening in person. Councilmember Hardy and Councilmember Park, please both remember to participate through both audio and visual technology. And at this time, Councilmember Hardy, please disclose whether any other individuals 18 years of age or older are present in the room at your remote location and the nature of your relationship to you.
There's no other grown-ups here, just me.
Thank you. And should the circumstance change during the meeting, please inform us for the record at that time.
I will.
Thank you. So we will mark you present.
Okay. Councilwoman Jane, your hands up.
I wanted to commend our commissioners for serving. They serve without pay diligently. Without these commissions, we couldn't have the outreach, we couldn't have the engagement with our public that we get. It's a very important function for the city, and I encourage other people. We have openings on our other commissions, and we're always looking for people that really wanna serve. I hope they can hear me out there in the lobby there, but I know I served on Planning Commission for five years, and then I got a big pay raise when I came to council. But these commissioners, they pay, they serve without pay, so I really appreciate their service.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move on now to item number two, which is a continuance from the last meeting. Action on proposed formation of a charter review committee to conduct comprehensive review of the city's charter to update, make corrections, and better align the charter with state law and current best practices, and to draft a comprehensive charter amendment for presentation to the city council and possibly the voters at the November 2026 election. City manager. City attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was a title only a lawyer could draft and love. Appreciate you reading it out, although I don't appreciate you dismissing all the prospective charter review commissioners from the baseball team before we started on this item. I do appreciate the opportunity to present to you tonight the concept of a top-to-bottom city operations-oriented review of the city charter, and depending upon your direction tonight and how that process might go, a possible comprehensive proposed amendment to the city's charter for consideration by the voters in the November 2026 election. But before we dive into that, I wanted to step back briefly and set the context for this, because I think to fully appreciate the importance and potential value of this exercise, it's important we understand what a city charter is and how it functions. In general, the city charter operates like the city of Santa Clara's constitution. And like the US Constitution, the charter establishes the basic structure of our government and how things are supposed to work. The city council can and does make laws that are more detailed to implement the provisions of the charter, but in order to amend the charter, it requires a vote of the public. By adopting the city charter, and this is really important concept here in California, the city asserts direct authority over, over what it's known as its municipal affairs. In effect, the city's saying, in certain areas of the law, we make the laws here locally, not the state. Traditional municipal affairs include land use policy, the structure of elections and the qualifications of your elected officials, the structure of the workforce, classified, unclassified employees, the departments, how we procure our public works and services, and in general, our fiscal structure, you know, and overall fiscal policies. As you all know, the state has encroached substantially into many of these areas recently, especially land use and housing policy. But if we were a general law city, state statutes and encroachments would be more substantial in these areas. And so there is considerable value in being a charter city. The key elements for our charter and really for most charters are listed here on the slide. It provides, in our case, it's not the only form of government, but in our case, for the council manager form of government. In effect, the elected city council, all of you, make the major laws and policies through budget amendment, or for budget adoption, ordinances, and resolutions, and your appointed city manager implements those policies and controls the overall day-to-day operations of the city. The qualifications and processes for electing and appointing certain officials are, are set forth in the charter. How duties are allocated among elected and appointed officials are set forth in the charter. Process for adoption of resolutions and ordinances to implement the charter are set forth. The creation of certain boards and commissions are provided. Our charter, like most kind of original charters, establishes a planning commission, a parks and rec commission, civil service commission, and board of library trustees, but it also provides for your ability to, to create other, you know, boards and commissions. A very important allocation and delegation of, of authority for input. And then the rules for city's fiscal management, as we talked about, public works and procurement practices. Again, classic, classic municipal affairs that it makes sense for local governments to adopt. There's even a process in there for how we grant franchises. All the charters from the original era, kind of in the late 40s, early 50s, have provisions like these, and in a lot of cases, very similar, if not identical, language. But also, over time, cities that adopted charters back in this original age have revised their charters, and in some cases, in some unique ways. And so, a lot of cities started with the same substantial charter, and they've changed over time. A lot of actually modern city charters that have adopted in the last 20 years aren't really that detailed by comparison to the original charters. They're very short, a few pages or more, with a focus really on asserting the local control, the concept of controlling municipal affairs, but without the details. The details are, in those cases, adopted exclusively by ordinance, with, again, the objective being, for most charter cities, fending off certain amounts of state control over rules you wanna make yourselves here locally. So what about Santa Clara's charter? Our charter, one of the early adoption charters, first adopted in its form, in its original form in 1951, with a more comprehensive adoption in 1952. It's been amended multiple times since then. Most amendments have been limited, targeting one, maybe two areas. There have some, been some substantial years, '72, '79, year 2000 was particularly important. A series of changes were made in 2016, but mostly really piecemeal over time. And the most common types of proposed changes are frequently in the elections arena, the terms, the qualifications, the structure for elections, either proposed by the city council or proposed by city initiative. That is the common area where a lot of charters get updated, and ours is no exception. The last comprehensive amendment, I think as I referred to, was adopted in 2000, but really those changes even were, were relatively minor. I'm still seeking the full text of that, but how it's described, it, it sounds like it was important and intended to modernize the charter, but was relatively minor. You have You have, in your information packet, Attachment 2, a summary of this that the City Clerk Office, Assistant City Clerk, puts together. It's a really excellent document, and it's got some interesting and informative history, and certainly will be a reference piece for any exercise we might have going forward, should you so direct. So why should we consider a comprehensive charter update process as proposed? It's a couple of basic reasons. Since 1952, and frankly, even since 2000, when the last really comprehensive look occurred of the charter, a lot has changed, both in the laws that apply to cities and in what are considered best practices for city operations. Laws have absolutely changed in the municipal finance arena, in the procurement arena, and in a lot of elections provisions. Talked about how the charter makes a lot of rules in these areas, in the municipal affairs areas, but it also frequently cross-references statutes that are contained in general law that fill in the gaps. And so, changes in the general law do affect how the charter is interpreted and a lot of its provision. As you know, since, in these last 25 years, the city itself has grown and changed, both in population and complexity. And so provisions that might have been updated and modern, you know, back in year 2000, just aren't anymore. So in order to make the city charter consistent with current laws and best practices, with the really overall arching objective of improving city efficiency and eliminating ambiguities, city staff is proposing that the city consider engaging in a comprehensive charter update process for the presentation to the city's voters in 2026. And I say "city staff" here, but of course, it's not just city staff. This concept was presented to the Governance and Ethics Group back in, on March 3, 2025, and they voted unanimously to bring this proposal before all of you for your consideration. Could you advance that next slide? My clicker has decided it doesn't want to advance. Thanks. Oh, there we go. So the next couple of slides provide you some examples of the provisions in the charter that may warrant review and update. These are mostly items that were brought to my attention by staff or that I've observed in my couple of years here. It's hardly an exhaustive list. They're presented in no particular order. That's actually not true. They're presented from the beginning of the charter to the end, but in no particular order of importance. And again, these aren't things that are proposed, they're just things that might warrant consideration and review and update. The first is, for elected officials, clarify the timing and application of the 30-day residency requirement. In the election that I was here and advising on, as the City Clerk and Assistant City Clerk will attest, there were some questions about how this rule applied, you know, for folks' residency, and it certainly warrants a review and clarification so that the attorneys, the city clerk, don't have to apply, you know, different interpretations each time it comes up. Updating a required special notice requirement for city proposed sales of real property is also worth considering. Right now, there is a threshold of $500 for any disposition of city property, where you have to publish the idea that the property is being sold in the newspaper, list the price and terms, and where the sale is going to be consummated. It's also, it's somewhat strangely like a provision, as if you're putting property up for foreclosure sale. That's typically how that, you know, is done. And that certainly warrants some review and consideration to at least increase that threshold and potentially make some other procedural changes to it. Number three, clarification regarding what constitutes a disposition or a change of use of city park property requiring a vote of the people. This is Measure R, it's in Charter Section 714.5. There are some ambiguities there that warrant clarification, but I'm also very aware that this was a matter that was very near and dear, you know, to the citizenry, and this might be an example, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, that even if there is ambiguity, it creates so much political controversy to modify it, you don't, you know, consider modifying. Again, the idea is to put things together that make sense, you know, overall, and not be too controversial with any one item. But on the list, because it's come up a couple of times, it might be worth clarification or at least looking at. Number four, clarifying roles and responsibilities of the elected city clerk. I've had a number of conversations with our elected city clerk about this. There are some real ambiguities about how this was set up, you know, in the first place, and subsequent changes to that, and what the intention, you know, is of that. And so looking at that and being clear, you know, on what those responsibilities are, is worth looking at. Updating and clarifying roles and responsibilities of the Board of Library Trustees. Back when this charter was adopted, and every charter with this type of provision was adopted, the Board of Library Trustees was much more involved in the day-to-day operations of the library and making library policy. It's just not that way anymore, and the provisions provide for that, they don't function that way. Based on input I've received, they don't want to, you know, to function that way. And so making sure that the charter reflects the modern practice for how that works and we're complying with the charter is worth consideration. Another list here. Updating budget provisions to include express provision for a two-year budget cycle and to clarify what constitutes a budget amendment requiring five votes. Right now, our charter does not contemplate a two-year budget cycle, it contemplates a one-year budget cycle. That creates some ambiguities, both and inconsistencies with what our actual practice is and what constitutes a budget amendment, as opposed to the implementation of a two-year budget that's been approved. Again, we want to align what our charter says with what our current practices are to make sure it all makes sense and we're complying with the law. This next item, number seven, from Section 1310. Consider increasing the threshold for public works or the use of city forces requiring city council approval from $1,000 to more reasonable amount, or potentially no amount, and have that implemented via ordinance. $1,000 for a city this size to use its own forces and to improve a public work is an extremely low number. I know there was an attempt to increase this number good some number of years ago that wasn't successful, so we need to be sensitive to that, but certainly something worth looking at, because there's a lot of work that goes into producing even simple staff reports for you, and it would be much more efficient to have this reset or implemented by ordinance, and that would be consistent with best practices. There's another provision in the procurement arena that the charter doesn't contemplate or consider, and that is the use of design-build procurement mechanism, especially with Measure I and the kinds of things that you are building now that lend themselves to that type of procurement and are done very efficiently with that kind of procurement, is something worth considering. If the charter was amended to include that, it wouldn't require the use of that, it would actually just create that and give that, present that as a tool for something that might be used. Again, don't have to do it, but definitely something that a lot of charters include. We actually amended the City of Chula Vista's charter to include a design-build provision, actually back in the early 2000s, and it was used there very successfully in a lot of different circumstances. These last couple are pretty wonky. Clarify how and when state laws apply. If no city charter provision or ordinance applies, always good to understand what the interrelationship is between city charter and state law is. And then there's any number of examples here where section headings can be improved using better, modern language. Wording and organization throughout the city charter can be done. Again, in this case, to improve the clarity and the user-friendliness of the charter. We want the things to be organized. We want it to be in language that people understand. We want both you, the city folks who have to implement it, and the public, you know, to understand what these things are and have them be easy to find. This, again, is hardly an exclusive list of the kinds of things that might be considered. The idea is that a comprehensive review process involving the Charter Review Commission would engage in a more comprehensive review and yield potentially many more, both meaningful and minor changes. But again, the idea of this is to focus on the workings of government, to add clarity, modernity, consistency with best practices. It's not intended to be a, to advance political objectives or to change things so fundamentally that they would create potentially problems out in the community. Obvious examples of these that I would consider to be out of bounds, in the implementation of this, would be changing the voting system, right? Everyone, there's a lot of consideration of ranked choice voting as a new and modern way to do things. I'm not saying that's a good or bad idea, I'm saying this process is not intended to get at that very meaty issue that would be worth looking at if anyone decided to in and of itself. Obviously, changing who's elected and who's not, changing the structure of government from the city council, you know, city manager form of government to some other form of government. These are major structural changes that warrant, if anyone even decided to proceed with them, would warrant consideration, you know, separately in and of themselves. This next slide gives you an example. You don't need to really read the words, but I think you can catch the vibe. You don't, yeah, you don't need to. You can catch the vibe. You can catch the vibe of it. This is an example of what a professional review and edit of a charter section might look like. This is the handiwork of Sue Ruder from my office, right, who has been, up until recently, the primary HR, you know, advisor and the person who staffs the Civil Service Commission, who's very familiar with these rules. She went through it and proposed these revisions to it to clarify what constitutes a classified versus an unclassified position within the city employment structure, and adds and clarifies references to the role and function of the Civil Service Commission. Wonky lawyer-like stuff, but meaningful, value-added things for the folks who are, who need to implement these provisions on a day-to-day basis. This is actually an interesting one, to the extent there's changes in this section. They probably need to go through a meet-and-confer, you know, provision with the unions, but again, very worthwhile exercise to get this section consistent with modern practice, consistent with what we actually do, and eliminate ambiguities. Sue went ahead, I didn't attach this one, I just asked her to do, you know, one for me. She also was very excited about this. So she also drafted changes to Section 908.1, to clarify and increase staff-level settlement authority to be equivalent to what the CMO's contract approval authority is under 908.1. I thank Sue for her eagerness with this, and she has definitely secured herself a position, whether she wanted one or not, on the team that I would assemble with your direction to assist with this, with this process going forward. So, next, I wanted to briefly present to you my experience with this process in the city of Chula Vista, where you know I was, I served as city attorney for about 13 years, near the end of my tenure. With a standing Charter Review Commission, we went through this exercise, really to great effect. And I know Chula Vista's not Santa Clara, there are meaningful differences, and every process is unique, but I thought this experience could be illustrative, if for no other reason to show that it can be done in a very fairly compressed, you know, timeframe. And the Chula Vista charter was a mess and needed a lot of review. In Chula Vista, the charter was adopted in 1949, again, one of the original, early vintage, you know, charters. It'd been amended multiple times, but after a pretty comprehensive revamp in 1978, really only piecemeal changes. Again, that should sound familiar. Over the years, it grew to 60-plus pages with many provisions, more detail than you would typically find in a charter, and not really aligned at all with state law, which had changed over time and best practices. Charter project was proposed, and the city council referred this to, in Chula Vista, which was a standing Charter Review Commission. I know you don't have that here, but that was the process there. And in effect, the elephant was eaten one bite at a time. The charter was divided up and allocated among the variety of Charter Review Commission subcommittees that were created to work with the city attorney's office and the corresponding responsible city departments for the provisions that were considered and reviewed. Proposed changes from these subcommittees were brought back to the full Charter Review Commission and categorized into Level 1, proposed changes, which were really just corrections and clarifications and reorganization. Level 2, proposed changes, which were updates to align the charter provisions with best practices and state law changes. And then a Level 3 proposed change, which really were the kinds of things that the Charter Review Commission themselves had been contemplating and were under their consideration, but it might be considered too material or too controversial to be included in the overall comprehensive charter proposed update, but they were nonetheless identified and, in effect, put in a parking lot for discussion and consideration at the council level. Ultimately, the council approved a proposal for the changes that were proposed, mostly Level 1 and Level 2 changes. I think they did incorporate one Level 3 change into it, and they were placed on the then-November 22 ballot, and it was very well-received by the public. It was approved by, with 64% of the vote, and amongst other meaningful, value-added changes to reduce kind of the bureaucracy and improve efficiency, just off the top, 15 pages of that massive charter were eliminated by consolidating and eliminating our redundancies. And the document ended up being much more, you know, user-friendly. So what would that process look like in Santa Clara? Well, it'd be, really be up to you and up to the Charter Review Commission. If the council desired to proceed, it would authorize staff to take the necessary steps to create a Charter Review Committee in this case, to implement the project per a formation process selected by the council. Really, there's two primary formation alternatives for this, both you're familiar with. Councilmember, one process would have council members recommending a member from their district. The mayor would recommend a member, you know, at large, and then that would ultimately be approved, you know, by the council based on those recommendations. Number two, the process you've most recently engaged in is a lottery process, which could be very similar to what was used to appoint the Measure I Bond Citizen Oversight Committee. I think this process was preferred by a majority of the governance group, because it was thought as a mechanism for de-politicizing, you know, what the composition would be of that group. That's up for you all to decide. While this was going on, concurrently, staff would develop a comprehensive charter work plan. Not a detailed work plan, because I think that would be hashed out with the Charter Review Commission, but at least a better understanding of how this process would work and the time period for it. And then with whatever process was chosen for the Charter Review Committee candidates, and the work plan would be brought back to the council for action and direction. A key element of the process, which I've been emphasizing throughout, is it really is intended to be a professional review focused on city operations and developing clarity and update of the charter. And so, input from the affected city departments, finance, for example, on the fiscal provisions, public works, for example, on the procurement, you know, and purchasing, on the procurement, you know, provisions, HR on the Civil Service, you know, commissions. All the groups that are, City Clerk's office on City Clerk role responsibility and the elections, you know, provisions. All the groups that have to work with these, you know, sections and understand them and implement them would be integral to this process, working with the Charter Review Committee in order to develop, with the objective, ultimately, an amendment for your consideration and if you proceed, consideration by the voters. The timing of this is important. We're kind of on the edge of what, you know, is feasible for this to meet the 2026 ballot measure, submittal requirements. Any charter update process should probably commence right away, no later than, you know, September of 2025, because all of that work product would need to be presented back to the city council and to the registrar of voters by late July or early August of 2026 in order to make it on the ballot. And so, recommendation is, review, discuss, and provide direction on proposed process for a comprehensive city charter update for possible presentation to the voters at the November 2026 election, including if the council desires to proceed, the process for the formation of the Charter Review Commission with one of the two alternatives identified or potentially some other mechanism that the council may decide. That's the end of my presentation, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your patience. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the council on this? Councilmember Jane.
Yes, I serve on the government's...
Yes, I serve on the Governance and Ethics Committee, and we did unanimously support this. I think that, I don't think that you expressed that a number of these measures would actually save the city quite a bit of money in terms of revising our procurement processes and the noticing that you have to do to sell, you know, surplus property or, or engage in, you know, public works contracts. So I, I recognize that it would actually save the city quite a bit of money. And then I, I personally like the idea of having a lottery system to select members of, of the commission or a committee, simply because it takes the politics out of it. I like the idea that we look at items that are, let's say, just operational rather than, say, political or, or changing how we interact with the, the voters of Santa Clara. And so, you know, if we did have something controversial like ranked choice voting, that would be a separate ballot measure that we would put forward, would not be included in this process. And so, I'm fully in favor of this.
Councilmember Chahal, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Attorney, for the presentation. As a former charter review committee member, where I started my first civic duties in 2011, I am all in favor of this review process. And I have a question, I have one question. I know you proposed 9 as an example, which will be, can be part of the review process by the charter review committee. How would a resident bring forward any suggestion or changes they want in the charter? Like, what would the process, setting that process for to be considered by the charter review committee? That's my simple question. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Karen, Councilmember Cardy, sorry. You're online. Go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, I appreciate, I apologize about the dog. Okay. My question is about the timeframe. So I need to make certain, I understand we're barely going to make it, but what kind of time commitment would this put on members who would like to apply? And I do like the idea of having the lottery like we did before, but my question is, would it be appropriate or should we, or should we not allow current commissioners to apply or anyone who's on, say, the Measure I committee already? We have some lovely committed members, and we just honored them a few minutes ago, so I'm wondering what would be appropriate for that, asking the city attorney. And it's not often a city attorney will take on something this difficult and propose it and be willing to work through it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess it's a timing question, logistics, as far as when will we need to approve such a commission for it to be, for it to make it to the, the November 2026 ballot?
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yeah, similarly to Councilmember Hardy, I think that in terms of the timing right now, I'm wondering, when we talk about the overburdening of our staff right now, I'm wondering in light of our current priorities, how this fits in particularly pertaining to major events. And I guess really the question is, is it the right time to do something like this? Is there something on the horizon that we are missing in our current charter review that says this needs to be put forward right now? I want to know, you mentioned that the review in Chula Vista, which I'm sure is similar here, was needed because it'd been such a long time and state and federal policy were not matching the document. Doing this as a one-stop shop or a one-time thing doesn't create that ongoing need to keep up with it. So is there an embedded opportunity within the charter committee to continue to review the charter? And then I just, I think the few times that the charter review has come up before Parkland and then this design-to-build issue. So I think the issue I had when we were talking about Measure I is when you form committees by lottery, there is an inherent need for training people to understand these. If staff suggestion is we need to do things one way and they're not qualified with the background to ask the right questions, then we essentially push our priorities on them without allowing them to really understand the implications. And I see, you know, a design-to-build change where that could really erode transparency and opportunity. While I, I hear what you're saying, that it would be necess, or it would be a benefit for moving things along, I want to make sure that the people who are making these decisions on a committee have that kind of fundamental knowledge of what they're, what they're doing. With that said, I, I do also think the lottery process is what we always need to be moving towards to de-politicize, but these are big committees, I would say. The work of a charter review is substantial, and so I assumed going in that most people would want to pick and choose from their districts. My suggestion is if we did that, if we had a qualified member that we knew, perhaps our committee could be a group of 13 to 15, just based on the exorbitant amount of tasking and the timeframe right now. And that would mean that you could select somebody in your district as well as have a lottery person from your district and then perhaps 2-at-large. I, I think that charter reviews in larger cities have had bigger committees than 7. So, thank you.
Just to follow up on that, yes, I've served on Santa Clara committees for major events, charter committees, and they're usually large, like 12 to 15 people. And because there's absences and other things, but I kind of like the idea of we each select one and then the rest are selected by, by lottery. Gives you a nice combination of people. I, I'm okay with this, but I want to ask the city attorney, because there's technical updates to the charter that are things that, you know, keeping up with law and just makes sense. But then there's also policy and major change-type updates, and I wanted to know how you're gonna, you propose we handle that, because we updated the charter in 2016. We had four charter amendments on the ballot, three of them passed. So, there, they were voted on individually because they were all, you know, big policy changes. So I look at, I have no idea what you're, what you're suggesting for the Parkland, since I just looked it up, 89.61% of our people voted, that voted for that. And with the attorney's analysis, it's pretty straightforward what you can and can't do. So that I look like, that looks like a hornet's nest. I'm just telling you right now, because I'll be one of the hornets on that. The, anything that changes our transparency, and I get about, I get the part about saving money. We all want to save money, but if you take away the transparency for anything, then, then there's going to be a problem, I think, in our community. So I think that any sort of issues that maybe expand contracting authority would need to have transparency enhancements with them as well. And so, I'm ask, I'm asking you, I don't know what you did in Chula Vista, but how are you gonna, are you gonna recommend lumping everything together to one charter review? Because I would be against that. I would like to see it as the technical issues, maybe together if we can. I remember in 2016, we had to take them all separately, so they wouldn't let us lump them all together. So versus, and then the other ones which have to be voted on separately. So I don't know how you did it there, but, you know, in this case, for the, it sounded like you were going to recommend about 20 amendments or more with what your report said. And I want it to be community-led, not 100% staff-led, you know, on this. So those, I put questions in there with, sprinkled with my comments. Councilmember Jane, do you have a question?
Yeah, I believe that some neighboring cities have done charter review, charter cleanups. I believe Sunnyvale just did one. Can you, do you have experience with what neighboring cities have done?
All right. That's it for the questions. Do you want me to go to the public? Do you want a little time?
I'm, I'm ready, Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I'll, I'll take Member Jane's question first, since you started and then slipped a question in. I've not looked at what other jurisdictions have done recently up here. We certainly would do that, you know, as part of our education, you know, process to see what's being done and what's been successful, you know, in this area. But I'm not specifically familiar with what the city of Sunnyvale, you know, recently did. The questions from a member Chahal. You asked how a resident would be able to bring forward a, a proposed, you know, revision. The meetings of the charter review committee would be public meetings, consistent with how this city does business and how most cities do business, consistent with best practices. That would be not only just advertised, you know, per standard, you know, you know, Brown Act requirements, but, you know, solicited, you know, more broadly for folks' participation. And so, any resident potentially could go and present in a public comment, you know, period, in front of the charter review commission and identify something that they would want, you know, considered, you know, consistent with the, the work plan, if you will, of what's being proposed. If the charter review committee itself had different ideas about that, they could build into their, you know, work plan some additional solicitation that they might want to do to get, you know, residents even more involved, but that would be the standard way that a resident would provide input and potentially make a suggestion. Member Hardy, you appropriately asked about the time commitment, both for the committee members themselves and for staff, and I'm not going to candy coat it, it could be significant. For committee members themselves, I think they, they might need to be ready to meet, you know, as frequently as monthly. And if not monthly meetings, there would be additional per a model that worked down in Chula Vista, and that would be up to you and for them to implement subcommittee, you know, meetings that would meet and focus, you know, on unique issues that they're assigned. So this is something that would be a substantial, you know, a potential commitment from folks who wanted to, you know, get involved in this. I would be driving with staffing from my office. Ideally, most of the staff support required. It is a legal exercise in terms of drafting and conceiving of proposed changes, but there would need to be input, you know, in consideration from the, the departments, as I mentioned, for their input. We already did a little bit of a, a part of that process, but, and I tested some folks' appetite for it, and there's, I will tell you, there's general enthusiasm for it, both to have things work, you know, the better and be more modern, and to save money and, you know, in staff time. I think there, for the, for the good of the order and to improve things, there would be willing participation, and I know the city manager's office supports, you know, this exercise as well. So, but it will, it could be a substantial time commitment, and I'm committed to take the lion's share, you know, of that and, and get it over the finish line if you, if you folks so direct.
Lynn, with that, can I just extrapolate?
Yeah, please.
From the city manager's perspective, certainly, we do have a lot on the city's work program, and this would add another significant project. I will say, however, though, in the next year and a half, we have two other projects that really dovetail nicely with this, and one is, and both of them are internal. One is the review of all of our city manager directives, what we call CMDs, policies that go out from the city manager's office to the entire organization, as well as, as the council knows, and I know governance knows, we've committed to launch a review of all of your council policies and procedures, over 90 individual policies. And so, we are really committed here to do a deep dive into all of our policies and procedures and frankly, update things that haven't been updated for decades and make sure that we're really operating it under the best practices. And so, a charter review or a charter modernization approach really could dovetail nicely with that. And so, as staff are reviewing our internal policies, we would add the charter as a component to that for each individual department.
Thank you for that. Madam Mayor, next question from Member Gonzalez. When we, when would you need to approve the CRC? There's really no exact date for that. The, the date that we absolutely need to meet is the date by which the, any proposed amendment is presented to you with enough time to interact, you know, on that and get a final version of it prepared over to the registrar. Again, that's end of July, early August, you know, at the latest. The idea of when you would start the process is as soon as possible in order to allow, you know, really the full comprehensive review and consideration that this process is, is intended to, to support. So if you directed us to proceed, for example, tonight, I would start working with the city manager's, you know, office and communications group to go down the path of, of the, the steps and the process next, necessary to solicit, you know, potential applicants, you know, to participate, you know, on the committee, with the idea of having all of that back to you as, as soon as possible and ideally no later than September in order to get them, you know, configured and up and, and operating. So, not a small lift, but ideally, that's how things would work with the formation of that. Member Cox, you fairly and appropriately asked, you know, is this the right time, you know, in use of resources? We absolutely have a lot going on kind of in the, in the city, but I honestly think we always will. There's always going to be a major thing, you know, and a, and a demand for us to work on. This is one of those, can't remember who created it, there's different quadrants, right, of the kind of things you work on. There's like the urgent things, right, and then the things that are important, you know, but not urgent. I think there is a lot of value in, in engaging in this exercise, and I don't know that there ever will be a right time. I think we have enough time before, you know, the November 2026 election, and again, a lot of things going on, as the city manager pointed out, that this not only dovetails with, but any kind of improvement of efficiency in our operations also frees up more time, right, potentially to deal with all those higher priority issues. And so, that's the concept, you know, behind it, and really my best answer, will it be a lot, you know, for us to, to handle? Absolutely, it will be, but I think it would be anytime, you know, we took it on. The ability to continue and to review things, that would really be up to you. Again, in, in Chula Vista and in other places, there are standing, you know, charter review commissions. I'm not suggesting that you do that here necessarily. You kind of have a governance and ethics, you know, committee now that in substantial part serves some of that, you know, functionality. But if that's something that council wanted to do, you know, and to have some on kind of ongoing process for review of the city charter, that would certainly be in order. Really, the idea behind this one is, although there were things done in 2016, it's been a long time since there's been any kind of top to bottom, and so this is a substantial, potentially one-time, not necessarily generational, but, you know, every 10-year, you know, type of visitation on things. And anytime anything substantial enough came up, you would always have the discretion to, you know, form another charter review committee to take a look at that. Design-build process, concerns about, you know, transparency. I hear you on that, Madam Mayor and Member Cox. I've seen design-build, you know, done in ways that is, again, consistent with best practice and not inconsistent, you know, with transparency. And again, it's not anything just because you add the tool that you would have to do, and it doesn't lend itself to every, you know, circumstance. And in terms of the qualifications of people to evaluate that, I don't know that you're going to find a design-build, you know, expert or procurement expert, you know, for your, for your commission, but you do have in-house procurement, you know, experts, you know, here, some of which have experience with design, you know, build in other jurisdictions. And to the extent the, the committee or you or we decide, you know, there needs to be some additional substantial substantive professional input on that, that's something certainly that could happen as part of the process. So, but I appreciate the interest. Some of this stuff is technical and, you know, warrants some meaningful level of professional input that not necessarily an average citizen, you know, would be able to, to comment on. Madam Mayor, you talked about potential for a hybrid committee. You guys could construct, you know, your committee structure any way you wanted. That would certainly be one, you know, potential mechanism. I get the desire to have a lot of committee members to make sure you've got a quorum. That also does create, you know, challenging and wrangling, you know, issues, so there's a little bit of a give and take on that. There's added value in numbers, and then there's, you know, added management and calendar There's added value in numbers, and then there's, you know, added management and calendaring, you know, challenges with that, too. But again, wherever you guys end up on that, I'll work with whatever group and staff will work with whatever group you construct for us. Distinguishing between what's a, you know, substantive policy change versus a cleanup. Mary, you're spot on in that. That is a sensitivity that we experienced down in Chula Vista, right, and will experience up here, and different people will have different views, you know, about what ought to be, you know, just something normal that's a consistent with best practice update with another person who might go, wait a minute, what are you doing? You know, that's huge. The people are counting on that. Don't mess with that. Ultimately, again, this is intended to be professional clarifying and updating. In the end, you will all decide as a council as to how to triage that and how to package it. In Chula Vista, they were able to really combine a lot of things in one comprehensive package that people were comfortable with. If that's not where you end up here, this council will have the discretion and the authority to batch it, you know, in different ways. And that was an ongoing conversation down in Chula Vista. When we did it, on how to batch it, I went over the level, you know, description of how things were done. Potentially, that could be a good model here so that when it comes up to you, at least in the opinion of the Charter Review Committee, you'll have things triaged in advance. But it'll be up to you to decide ultimately how to package and how to present anything at all in the end of the day. And I think the work plan, you know, can get at some of that as well. Transparency, both in the process, you know, Marin and the changes, you know, that are proposed, couldn't agree with you more. None of this is intended to exclude anybody or compromise, you know, values of this community. While there's a best practice concept, it doesn't need to be valueless. And so that's certainly something that committee members can build into it. You can even build into it if you wanted as a, as a tenant of your work plan. And again, ultimately, if anything's discomforting to any of you from a transparency standpoint, that'd be a comment that you could make, and it could be changed accordingly. So I think that's all the questions, Madam Mayor, that I've got.
I think I have one more from Councilmember Hardy. Her hand is a...
Oh, very good.
Do you have another question, Karen?
Yes, well, the one I asked that maybe I got shouted down by the dog, who has been taken care of, by the way, he's in another room. I was wondering, from a legal point of view, if it was a problem if we had current commissioners...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I see that now, yes. So you're, the, the, the current kind of prohibition on having people serve on more than one committee really isn't a formal law or policy, it's just been the practice. And so it would be up to this council to decide, and you could decide with how you direct us, whether or not to allow for whatever process is used, you know, to...
She can't see you when you're looking at the screen.
She can't see me, I know, I'm talking to...
I don't know who you're talking to, but talk straight.
I don't know.
And she can see you.
I was, I was talking to her when she was on the screen.
Yeah, but she's, she's here.
I know, she's in the ether. So I'll look straight out at you, Madam Mayor, and imagine her. But that, that could be something that could be done as part of your direction. So it's not a, it's not a hard and fast policy you could direct to have it work otherwise.
All right, thank you. I guess you said you're finished?
Yes, I am.
So I can go, I can go to the public if there's any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue. Any, do you have any cards, City Clerk? Do you have any cards on this? Any?
I have no cards on this item, and there are no hands up at this time.
Would anybody like to speak on this issue? Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you, Brian Darby. I'm, I didn't realize this was going to be spoken of today. That's really important. The charter is basically the backbone of how a city runs. When you do it, I agree with you, Madam Mayor, that we remember not only transparency, but sometimes democracy is really messy, and we don't want to try to make it not messy. Because then you get efficiency, but you leave people off to the side of the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else want to speak on this? Okay, council. I would like, I'm just going to start. I'm, I'm okay with moving ahead with this, but I think we need a bigger committee. This is a big job, and it shouldn't be just in the hands of like seven people. I agree with the, I thought our process when we selected members, what did we just select them for?
Measure I.
What was it, Measure I, the bond committee? I thought that was nice. I think this is going to be a lot, even a lot more work for that. And I saw in the past, when I served on these committees, there was at least 15, maybe more people. And not everybody was there all the time, but the work just continued. It just continued. But I like the fact that if we could, I want to propose this, that we appoint, each council member appoints one person, and then there is also an additional person pulled from each district by lottery. We have so many people that want to serve by lottery, and then maybe two at large, so we have an odd number. So it's 15. And then I don't think we should exclude any commissioners. I think it should be open for everyone to apply. I think it's that important. It needs to be a, a, a big democratic process. And when you have, I, I'm just uncomfortable with just seven people. You're going to need a lot more to go through this. So I'm, I'm okay moving ahead with it. I'm, again, going to be looking for, you know, big, cleanup items, fine. Technical items, fine. But any big items, I want to make sure that they're dealt with separately. Because I think that's, that's important, to not lump everything together. Sounds like we're going to have maybe a lot of changes, but proposed changes. So Councilmember Jane.
I think the problem that we need to clarify is if you had a large committee, and I know the Charter Review Committee that I led, which was the Measure C Districting Committee, was only seven people. The Charter Review Committee for elected to appointed Chief of Police and Clerk was also seven people. So we have had Charter Review Committees that were smaller. The issue with having a large committee is how do you do the scheduling? Do you try to make sure that you get only quorum? Or do you want to make sure that you get far more than quorum to be able to plan the meetings? There needs to be, I know when I ran the Charter Review Committee, I had monthly meetings, and it was very difficult to meet the timeframe. So I think it's critical that we start as soon as possible so that we can get a very transparent, active discussion with members of the public involved and the Charter, Charter Committee. But if you have a large committee, you can decide that you're going to exclude a lot of people if they can't make it, or you can try to include them all, in which case it's very difficult to find a meeting time. So I like the lottery system. I believe that this could be done with seven people efficiently and to do that by lottery. But I could go either way with appointed or lottery.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I, too, served with Councilmember Chahal back in 2011 on the Charter Review. Scheduling becomes a headache and a half, the larger it becomes. I can see very easily, you could, you could, you could do kind of what we did with, with the Measure I, is you could have a member that is chosen by lottery and then an alternate. And that's what we've done there. And I'm thinking that that could be a very good model for this as well. Thank you.
I just want to propose more members, which is more democratic, because when you have a seven-member committee, you could be having decisions made by four people if people don't show. When we had the larger committees of 13 or 15 members, most people would show because they're interested and they want to serve. Absences were not the problem. But it was a lot of voices looking at, this is, this isn't just a one task item, whether or not we should elect the police chief. This is a much bigger job, which I think, you know, for the size of our community, should involve more people, especially if you're talking about going into subcommittees and other things. You just, seven people, it just doesn't, it really doesn't work for this large of a task. And I'd like to see more people involved, not less people, more people involved in this. This is important to our community. I'm really going to advocate for a larger committee. And, and to make sure that, you know, people that are there because they want to be there, they want to serve, you know, you all sat, most of you sat at the, the selection of the Measure I Committee. We have so many people that want to serve. I can't remember how many applicants we had for that. Was it over 100? Do you remember? How many?
127.
We had 127 applicants for that committee. And we, I don't even think we allowed commissioners to be involved, right? If you were on an existing commission, could you apply?
No, but nobody was excluded, and there was only a residency requirement.
Oh, it was everyone?
For district.
Okay. You think about 127, and we're going to pick seven? I mean, I think there'd even be more interest in this committee, so I, I believe we should open it up. Vice Mayor Cox?
Yeah, I, I think that my, my concern is more about, again, the timing. And while I do know that there will always be many, many things that we're working on, I think that we're in a once-in-a-lifetime year in 2026, seeing FIFA and the Super Bowl. So I, I don't want to prescribe to staff that this is too much, but that is a concern. I don't know if a larger committee relieves any of that with help, but I do think in terms of subcommittee building, it allows more hands to do more work on the side. And then, again, I think logistically, it could be as simple as when we promote this, staff has already selected dates, and people know that if they're going to join, it has to be within this timeframe. However, I think that what I would like about the larger committee, too, is I, I think we have responsibilities as council members to continually reach out to our constituents and find the people in our community who are excited. And I would love the opportunity to work with some of the really talented people I've seen in my district and task them and give them opportunity and empower them to lead the city in this way. What I was worried about, again, coming in, is if we do that routinely, then we have, you know, a worst-case scenario, just a majority vote reflected in a, a small committee, which is why I said, you know, if we did a lottery for one, as well as the selection. But that's for sure not a hill to die on. I think, again, I'm more concerned, concerned about the time, but I'll go with staff's belief that this is not going to hinder our very pressing need for attention to major events right now and other things. So, thanks, just comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Park.
Yes, thank you. I actually was also part of the City Committee. I was part of the General Plan Steering Committee back in 2009, 2010. That was a larger committee. It had a lot of developers, had a lot of architects, had a lot of people who had opinions about what the general plan should look like. And discussions were much longer. I remember feeling that a lot of the discussions that we had were not complete because there were a lot of people that had things to say. And given the time, not a lot of people had, had things, were able to say those things. And it's funny, because during that time, I mostly listened. So, you know, I, I do think that the committee is, has room for more than seven, but I don't know that we have to go with, you know, multiples of seven and do seven appointed, seven lottery, and, you know, some at large. My bigger concern is, again, we talk about, when we talked in the Ethics and Governance, Governance and Ethics Committee, we talked about different levels. Level one, clarification, not changing the functioning of the city. You know, wanted to just clean up language. Level two, changing a little, non-controversial. And level three, controversial items, which would be split out into separate measures, potentially, because, you know, those, those require a lot of thinking. And my bigger concern is just determining, that just having those discussions would require, I don't know, full-time lawyer determining the level of items brought before the body. And, you know, I think that without a very good understanding, without good definition and with good, without good filtering of what actually goes into a measure, it doesn't matter how much discussion you have. I also think that this, this committee would spend a lot more time if, if we had serious discussions about the issues that we're, that do affect the city and cleanup. There's so many different areas. The charter is very big, very long, and we have so many different things that we could talk about. I generally like more people, more voice. I generally don't like duplication of voice, which is if people are serving and have voice in other committees, then if they wanted to serve on this and they got, they got appointed, maybe they could step down from, from one of the committees. But, you know, I think that having more people would be a good thing, but I don't know that 14, 15, I don't know if that, that is a good number. I think that there's a number less than that, but potentially more than six or seven, which could work. I also think that we may find that coming up with the items that need to be updated in the charter is, is a bigger job than we expected, and that we won't come to, we won't do a full job. Maybe we'll do, you know, pieces, and then we'll have a continuing committee, which looks, you know, election year after election year for things to clarify and potentially things that to put into a level two or level three, level two or level three measure, separate measures. But maybe there should be a standing Charter Review Committee to look at these things and stuff that happens to come up every four to six years in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, I think it's very important for us to do this charter review. The Governance and Ethics Committee has been looking at council policies, and many of these policies are 20, 30 years old. And I remember when former City Clerk, Hossam Hagag, first started talking about getting bee boxes in his yard. And he said, the city code was, you know, 50, 60 years old, and that, that when he became clerk, he was going to go through the whole city code and update it. And it certainly needs it. We certainly need a charter review, a charter cleanup, update. It's, it's way past due. We need to, and as the city attorney said, we will always have a lot of work, there's always going to be items on our agenda. We just have to buckle down and get it done, because I think it's important that we be current.
Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree, like, we need to have a charter update, basically, and to agree with the presentation. And the city attorney has a good experience from Chula Vista, what you did over there. So that said, I know there is a discussion about how many members of the committee. I would suggest, like, for management, managing the committee and efficiency point of view, I'll propose that we can have seven members, one each for the district and one large, and let's have four other members, which we can appoint by lottery. And that will be 11. I think 11-member committee would be a good enough size, like, comparing to seven versus 11. So I'll propose that four members by lottery at large and one member each appointed by the seven council members. I'll propose that. I'll be ready to make a motion to that effect when we are ready.
I would second that if you, if you make it that they're all lottery, but that at least one of them is from each district. So maybe the first six are from districts, and then the other five are completely at large.
If the council so decides that, because there was a proposal that we want to appoint one each, let's talk about it, but if they, if council has a consensus on that, I'll be okay with that.
Can you, what is your motion? Can you...
I said, total 11-member committee. Seven will be appointed by each one of us, seven, six council member and mayor, and four of them will be appointed by lottery at large, citywide.
And I'm happy to second that.
Because it becomes an issue, like, if we have a much, I, I know when we were in 2011 Charter Review Committee, it was a very large committee, and we had some management issues and time management issues, with the larger the number, much larger. So I think that time we had maybe 17, 18, or 20, something close to that. So that number, 11, falls, like, look at the... So that number, 11, falls, like, look at the city of San Jose has, I think, 11 council members for the city of a million people. So they are representing that. So I came forward with that number. That's a good amount of number to work with within the city. Yep.
Councilmember Hardy?
I was going to propose something similar. I came up with the same number, 11, as in a lottery, we could pick at lottery, as we did before, for Measure I, from each district. And then all of the, all of the, we use balls, were put in there and then that would give us six members and then had five chosen at large. That is another idea, which completely takes the politicizing out of it, if we'd like to do that.
You're just saying 11 members, just?
11 members total. My, I don't have to have it be a substitute. It's a possibility of instead of us appointing each one of us from a district, that there be a lottery for each district where one is chosen and then five, all of those not chosen, as we did before, and then you choose five at large. So you would have a member, a group of 11. That's my thought.
Okay, okay. Was there a second to the motion?
Yes.
There was a second. Motion maker. Are you? It was Raj Chahal's motion.
But I'm, okay.
His was seven with us appoint, each appointing one, and then four at large.
Four at large. That's the motion.
And then Councilmember Hardy talked about 11.
All at large.
Seven, six from districts and five at large. Right?
Yeah, that's how.
Yeah, six at district, five at large. That's what she's proposing.
Yep. Even, even the 14 are similar, but only thing is, we are appointing one each of us is appointing versus a lottery. So discussion is made, do we want to appoint one or do we want to have all 14 by lottery? That's the discussion, like, we can, I'm okay, ready to.
Oh, 11 by lottery.
11, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and.
They're very different, though, so.
Yeah, I want to be clear what the motion in second is. Is the, is the, are you waiting to further discuss alternatives?
I'm waiting for discussion, yeah. Otherwise, we can go for a vote and then if this doesn't pass, we can have another motion on that.
I wanted to propose we each appoint one and then we do lottery, one from each district. That's what I wanted to propose. So we have a combination, so it's sort of a full committee represented, representing the entire city. So it's, everybody will have, like, District One will have an appointed representative and a lottery representative, same with District Two, District Three. That's kind of what I wanted.
And so that's a third, I understand what you're saying. That's a third model still. So you are.
I like number three.
Yeah, which would be 13 members, right?
Right.
If I understand you correctly.
Can we, can I substitute that? I'll make a substitute motion for number three.
We would need an odd number, so yours is 12.
Yeah, so it would be then two.
Or 14, excuse me.
Two at large.
15. The total will be 15.
It'd be 15.
Unless somebody gives up a vote like you and then there'd be 13.
I could give up a vote and then it could be 13. And it's only two more than what you wanted, then we.
Fourth option.
We each get to vote, we each get to select a person. I think that's important, that we each get to select a person and then six at large, I mean, six from the, one from each district. That's 13, right? Is that seven and six? Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to propose that as a substitute motion.
Yeah, I, why don't I accept that?
Did you accept that?
We can accept that. 13, 11, not much difference.
Yeah, it's not much difference, but then each district will have.
One appointed.
Two representatives from each district. And then we have a more fuller.
I'm not sure the second will.
Are you, second accepts that? All right. City Clerk? So again, a motion would be.
Should I repeat it?
Well, you can repeat the motion, but.
I can repeat it.
Each council member gets one selection, and then we're going to take one selection from each district by lottery.
With you not having an at-large by lottery. So for a total of 13.
13. Otherwise, it has to be 15.
Yeah, with all seven of you making a recommendation and six selected via lottery by district, with one per district.
One per district.
So each district will have two representatives.
And Mayor, one nuance, just to be clear, that Member Gonzalez was contemplating, is the, are the council appointments required to be from your own district? Or are we just going to let that be to the council person's discretion, assuming you're going to choose from your own district?
I would like this to be from your district, so that we have a fuller representation.
So you can include that in the, so that's part of your motion, is to have that be required?
Yes. Okay.
So if I may, I'd like to read this back to makers of the motion. So Charter Review Committee should be comprised of six members chosen by each council member to represent districts one through six, and six members to represent District one through six, and one at large selected by lottery.
No, no, not quite. Mayor also point one.
I get to appoint one, too.
That's where I got lost.
I just don't have, I don't get a lottery person.
Okay, so that's.
With the added, with the added nuance, if I might, Madam Mayor, of no prohibition on any of the either appointed or members chosen by lottery of them serving on another commission.
Right. It's available to all Santa Clara residents.
Available to all Santa Clara residents, even if they're serving on an existing commission.
On an existing committee.
Right. Council members can't be part of that.
Or influencing.
This is for a total of 13?
Total 13.
Okay, so.
Get ready, City Clerk.
Okay, I think I got it. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I hate to throw something at the end here, but there was a little confusion. Should there be something about the proposed member be a registered elector of the city? There's a couple benefits to that that I saw. First of all, it would be easy to identify where the person is a resident. You check their voting thing. So I just wonder, I know for the commissions, most of the commissions, they have to be a registered, a resident and a registered elector of the city, and I wonder if that would be appropriate here.
I think it should be, but that's up to the council. Anybody have any ideas? Councilmember Hardy?
I had the same thought, that we were wanting to make, because it's from district, that when we do appoint someone, that they are from our district, and when someone is chosen by lottery, that they are also from our, from that district. And I would agree with the city clerk that that by voter registration is the best way to say that they are a resident of that district. And so I'm wondering from city attorney, can we nuance that to put in that proviso? Thank you. And I feel like I could support it then.
Madam Mayor, if I might, you can do that.
All right. City Clerk, put that in.
Okay. So Charter Review Committee should be comprised of six members chosen by each council member to represent District one through six, and one at large selected by mayor, and six members to represent districts one through six selected by lottery. Correct? Each applicant should be registered voter within their districts. No?
But it's.
I'm sorry, it's seven is the, appointed and six by lottery. Did you have?
I had one through six and at large.
Okay.
Well, you said it's, I didn't hear that.
So there's a total.
Because you were talking, I couldn't hear. City Attorney.
And then the registered voters within, and then was there one other thing that our
Qualified elector.
Qualified.
Qualified elector in the district.
And they can be part of any commission, any existing commissioner can be part of the process.
There's no restrictions, just a qualified elector in the district or at large, at large.
Either.
Yeah, or at large. Actually, no, there is no at-large lottery, just for our appointments. They have to be qualified electors.
But even at the at-large or the.
The district.
The other ones should be registered electors of the city.
Yeah, everybody, everyone should be.
All 30.
Yeah, that was my understanding, Mayor, regardless of appointment or lottery, qualified elector.
Qualified, okay. All right.
Okay. Aren't we glad we didn't hear this at midnight the other night? Look, we would have been 3 o'clock in the morning.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
No.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
And Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes six to one. Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you for this democratic process. Very good. Okay, moving on now. We have our consent calendar. All items are approved with one motion unless an item is pulled for discussion. City Manager, I know you have something. Councilmember Chahal? We'll start with Councilmember Chahal.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor, item 4K, let me read. Action on authorizing the use of city electric force for new dark fiber installation at various locations. Some of the locations are falling within 500 feet or less than 1,000 feet of my office building, so I'll recuse on that item 4K.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to request a minor change to 4O. 4O is an action to approve the implementation of a Section 401A Deferred Compensation Plan and authorize the city manager to execute all planned documents to implement the 401A Deferred Compensation Plan and authorize the city manager to execute side letter agreements and execute any future side letter agreements with bargaining groups for the city's contributions toward deferred compensation from the 457 plan, 457B plan to a 401A plan. Long title, really just shifting our deferred compensation plans from a 457 to a 401A. This involves a number of our collective bargaining groups. We've had a request from Unit 9, our unclassified miscellaneous management employee unit, to pull their item. They need to have some internal discussions with their unit members on that, but in order not to hold up this action for all the other bargaining groups, really just want to recommend that the city council take action, with the exception of Unit 9, for this item.
Thank you. I have a question on 4F, and I don't know if I should pull it and ask, or should I just ask it right now? Okay, so it's the City Council and Authorities' Action Delegating Authority to the City Manager for the city, the Executive Director for Santa Clara Stadium Authority, the Contract Administrator for the Sports and Open Space Authority, and the Executive Director for the Housing Authority during the City Council recess period from July 16, 2025 through August 18, 2025. And I did get this from a resident. As far as the Super Bowl agreement, which we, Government Services Agreement, which we still don't have, is there any intention for you to sign that type of agreement during this? I just want to get it on the record for my resident.
No, not at all. That would come to the City Council in open session and we would endeavor to.
Will be before Super Bowl?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm still asking, right? It's in a couple months. What types of items then would come? So nothing big or?
These are intended to be regular or routine items. The City Council has a little over a month before you bid again. And so if something comes up, it gives the manager the ability to authorize that action, typically an extension to a contract, an emergency repair that's needed, without needing to convene the City Council for that action.
And you give us a report at the end of the period as to what you have signed?
We give you a report at the end of the period.
That was of emergency or the minor nature, right?
Right.
Okay.
Normal, commonplace. Santa Clara has done this every year, as do cities all up and down, frankly, the country.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so is there any member of the public or anyone that has any comments on the consent calendar? We have, is that a hand for us? Is that for Consent Calendar, Traffic Division, Public Works? Traffic Division, Public Works, is this on the consent calendar? Your hands up.
Yes, wrong account. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Item 4.O. for the 401A plan.
Oh, yes.
We'd like to pull for discussion for the bargaining units. I'll make a statement.
Okay, so the, the city manager made the note on the changes. Did you hear that? I just want to make sure you heard that.
That's supposed to be separate from that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So we're going to pull item 4O for discussion under Consent Calendar items, and that's after public presentations. So, anyone else? All right, may I have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the balance of the calendar.
Second. So we have a motion by Councilmember Jane, seconded by Councilmember Chahal, noting that Councilmember Chahal is abstaining on item 4K, and we are pulling item 4O for discussion. So when you're ready, City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, if you can repeat that motion.
Yes, adopting balance of the consent calendar with the note that Councilmember Chahal will recuse from 4K, and 4O has been pulled for further discussion.
Thank you. All right.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
And Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is public presentations, and those are for items that are not on the City Council agenda. Do we have any members of the audience? Oh, you have, do you have a list? Do you have any cards?
The names are already entered.
I guess I should go to the item, right? Okay, hold on.
We have Howard Gibbons.
Start, Howard, please, first. Come forward, please. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Looks like I got a lot of stuff to talk about tonight. First of all, I want to make sure everybody is invited out to the street dance coming up. The concert right after that's coming up real soon here. I don't know if you guys will be back in session by then, but got to show up to the street dance. And let's see. Cinema in the Park, is this Friday? That's a good one. I know I always invite you guys out, and I never get nobody's show. Sunday, gonna be there. I can't offer you no free hot dogs. Mayor will punish me. Next thing was, I hear you guys are getting ready to look about giving the city attorney a raise in pay. I'm asking you to give him a lot, a lot raise in pay. I've been trying to go, remember he negotiated 10% discount with me for the hot dogs for law people a few months back? I'm trying to negotiate with him that he cuts 10% of that big, big raise that you're going to give him to the starving hot dog dudes of Santa Clara. He's on it. He's laughing about it, but you know he always goes for it. Outside of that, I hope you guys have a good time on your vacations and look forward to seeing you guys out at the concerts and the movies. I lost what I was going to say. I got to let Tyler know that I did go back and buy the blue shirt, so now he knows I got the blue shirt. I know you don't know. Wait till you talk to Tyler. That's all I got to say. Have a great night and a great vacation. I don't know what to say about the city manager. What can I say? We all have a good time here.
Howard, you continue to say you don't see anyone at those, the concerts in the park. Hello?
I stand corrected.
I see you every time, and I actually.
The mayor does not miss them.
Buy a hot dog for full price, city attorney. Buy a hot dog for full price, city attorney. I pay full price for a hot dog.
And she's a really good tipper, dude. She pays like three times her bill on tip. Paul loves you for that. I see Kelly, and I see the mayor. Uh, yeah, she's a good tipper, too. But you still need to, you know, think about that 10%, you know? Starving hot dogs of Santa Clara.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Always fun to see Howard. Okay, sometimes. All right, next, city, I don't have any names.
Dan Andrasak.
Dan, come forward, please. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city management staff. Downtown blocks A and B are critical gateway blocks that will activate the downtown. They will possess unique features like a theater announcing Santa Clara, an open food market, open space, and art. The approved downtown precise plan has made blocks A and B ready for this city and city management to send out an immediate RFP. There is no other way to determine blocks A and B, blocks A and B's estimated value without completing a transparent, open RFP process. There are not enough comps or no comps available that would align with this unique and strategically placed property across from Santa Clara University in the heart of Silicon Valley to provide an accurate, legitimate estimated value. Once this RFP is complete, completed, the city should then determine if it is the best use based on the bids received. We request this city council hold blocks A and B from any other current or future negotiations until an open, transparent RFP process is concluded. We've waited 10 years for this, let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, you're up next.
Mary will have six minutes. She has time given to her by Jonathan Marinaro.
By who? I'm sorry?
Jonathan Marinaro.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mary Grizzle. Councilmembers, Mayor Gilmore, and our city manager, Joe Von Grogan. You all know we want to start where we want to start, and that is, wait a minute. We want to start the downtown right where it belongs, in its original historic location. And just as importantly, we want an RFP issued immediately for blocks A and B, because there is no other way to truly evaluate what these properties are worth. Only through an open competitive process can we ensure the public knows the real value of these blocks and make decisions that are transparent, responsible, and in the best interest of Santa Clara. Blocks A and B are shovel-ready now. Please release the RFP. And by the way, contrary to what I've heard, an RFP by itself doesn't violate the Surplus Land Act, as long as it's done for informational purposes only, to assess market interest and value, and doesn't commit the city to disposing the property. Many cities do an RFP for ideas without declaring the land surplus. Then they decide what they want to do with it. Let me also point out Rod Denham, founder and chair of Reclaiming Our Downtown, recently conducted a survey online, which shows 89% in favor of rebuilding downtown, exactly like the 1,000-plus we surveyed back in 2018, and tragically, just like the survey back in 1961, where the people overwhelmingly said not to tear down our downtown. We can't ignore the public's voice again. The people of Santa Clara have spoken, time and time again. People keep asking me, where's the, Santa Clara's downtown? The truth is, we lost it decades ago. But you can't stop an idea whose time has come. Release the RFP on blocks A and B, so we can finally get started to bring our downtown back. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a public presentation? Please come forward. Welcome back.
Thank you. I, I, in December, I gave everybody a copy of the Constitution of the United States. Now, that was six months ago, and things have dramatically changed, and we should be well aware of that. So, I thought I would just read this. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, to ordain the establishment of this Constitution or the United States of America." When those words were penned, pretty much everybody in this room didn't fit what they meant by "we, the people." That has grown. When you start excluding people because of situations, and people are taken other places, I understand there's both sides, and this is not directed at the present administration in Washington. This is directed at us as a people. The loss of our Constitution is only one generation away, and I think we need to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public members that would like to speak? No? All right, we are gonna move on then to consent item pull for discussion, and that's item 4O, and that is, I'll get there in a minute. It's a long consent, okay. Approve the implementation of a section 401A deferred compensation plan and authorize the city manager to execute all planned documents to implement the section 401A deferred compensation plan and authorize the city manager to execute side letter agreements and execute any future side letter agreements with bargaining units for city contributions toward deferred compensation from the 457B plan to the 401A plan. And city manager, you already made one change to that. Do we have the gentleman online that asked that this be pulled?
Yes, he's under Traffic, Traffic Division, Public Works.
Traffic Division, yes. When you're ready, go ahead, please.
Apologies for the name. Hello?
Hello.
The vice president of the Unit 4 Engineering Bargaining Group. This statement is a joint statement with Unit 4 Engineers and Unit 578, City of Santa Clara Employees Association, in order to raise a concern regarding how the proposed 401A plan is being presented to the council and implemented by HR. Specifically, the decision by the city to not allow employee contributions for the 401A plan, which we believe is a no-to-low-cost way to enhance employee benefits. When the option for the plan was first introduced to the bargaining groups, our unit and many others were excited because it would help improve our members' benefits. Following an informational meeting with multiple bargaining groups with Nationwide in May of this year, several questions arose concerning whether employee contributions could be included under this new plan. Nationwide confirmed that employee contributions, both pre-tax and post-tax, are available options that the city may adopt. However, when Unit 4 asked HR whether employee contributions would be allowed, HR stated that the city is not interested in providing that option, and to date, we have not yet received a formal explanation as to why an employee contribution option cannot be implemented. Once the city adopts this plan, it is our understanding that it will be impractical to revise it later to allow employee contributions due to specific IRS rules. And also, Unit 4 and 578 acknowledge that there are specific restrictions if an employee contribution option is added. However, we believe there are several practical solutions to safeguard against this, as discussed with Nationwide, and the city is not considering the upside to providing its employees with more options. Therefore, we request that the city council to delay its decision on this item until council, HR, and all bargaining groups have had thorough discussions about the potential options for structuring the plan, which is presented in Section 6 of the adoption agreement in your attachment. We feel that the full picture has not yet been presented, and we urge that the council to ask more questions about the cost of implementing an employee contribution option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City mana, city manager? How are we to handle this? Is this a closed-session item? Do we need to discuss this more, delay it? If it's a side letter agreement and these units don't sign it, then
Sure.
Tell us how this works now.
So, the units that have spoken represent units that are, that are not included within the council action. However, given the request, my recommendation would be we postpone this item until your next meeting. Let us go back, have additional conversations with HR and the bargaining group. I'm not sure all the information stated just now is correct, but I don't want to have the council taking action when we're not prepared to give you a definitive answer on what's just, what's been said. So, and depending on the information, it may be a matter subject to bargaining, in which case, we would meet in closed session before that.
Closed session, okay. Before I ask for a motion, were you gonna make a motion, Raj? Or a question? I want to go to the public and then ask for a motion.
You can go to, just kind of comment to me.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Do we have anyone online? I don't see anyone online. Okay. Councilmember Chahal.
I do agree, like, if there is a provision where both the city as well as the employee can make a contribution to these retirement plans, it should be considered. So, as mentioned by city manager, if you want, I don't know the intricacies of how this will be, pan out, what are the formalities to add employees to contribute towards that, but it would be great if we can, employee also can contribute, but I'm ready, I'll be ready to make a motion to bring it forward when we have all the clarifications.
So, the motion to continue until
Continue and bring it forward.
The next council meeting, or closed session or open session, whatever.
Desirable by the, whatever decided by the
Because again, it's gonna be a month from now, so
Yeah.
So, is that a motion to continue?
Continue, depending upon what the staff discussions are.
What, what motion would, would it be appropriate for this?
Continue to a date uncertain.
Continue to date uncertain.
Okay, so continue to, item 4O, continue to date uncertain.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Chahal, seconded by Councilmember Hardy, to continue this item to date uncertain, since we don't meet for another month anyway. So, city clerk, clerk, assistant city clerk, when you're ready to read back that motion.
The motion on the floor is to continue this item 4.0 to a date uncertain. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. So, we're gonna move on to public hearings, general business, item number five, study session and update on the city's shared mobility program. City manager?
Thank you, councilmembers of the public. This item is a study session and an update on the city's shared mobility program, also known as our bike and scooter share program. For the past several years, the city has operated a shared mobility permit program, which allows private operators such as Bird and Lime, an opportunity to provide their shared devices to the public for rent through a dedicated mobile application. We'll have a presentation tonight from Steve Chan, our transportation manager, within the Public Works Department. He will provide a brief presentation on the background of the program, as well as information on the operations of the program to date. Steve?
Thank you, welcome.
Good eve, good evening, Mayor, member of the council and the public. For the agenda for this presentation, we're gonna include some background information on the program, the shared mobility program information, upcoming program changes, and question and comment to follow up the, to conclude the presentation. In 2019, city council placed a temporary moratorium on shared mobility on bicycle and scooter, and directed staff to develop a program primarily regarding concerns with shared mobility, rapid expansion across their country, and the lack of regulations. In 2020, California AB 1286 requires shared mobility operators to obtain city permits and agreement. A class action ADA litigation was also filed against scooter companies in San Diego, San Diego, and other California city, where the lawsuit emphasized the need to ensure accessible public space and highlight the risk of allowing unregulated scooter operations. And the finalization of the Santa Clara program was paused until this litigation was resolved. From 2019 to 2021, city staff developed a permit program for the shared mobility device. This was based on research on laws, review of existing programs, industry best practices, discussion with operator and other city on program issues. City staff also did outreach to residents, city department, BPAC, and council to obtain their feedback. And finally, on December 7, 2021, city council approved a shared mobility program. As part of this program, no additional public work staff resources was allocated to manage For the program administrative regulation, which includes among many items, shared mobility requirement, where these devices can be parked, where these devices can be used, device fleet management, education and outreach, operation safety, on operation safety, data sharing, enforcement, special event requirements, and others. Key element for the operators under this program, the permit grants a one-year operation, operating period. Total number of devices is capped at 3,000 citywide for all operators. It also established device parking and management requirements, device usage data that, to be made available to the city, customer service requirement to answer question and resolve complaints and customer issues. It also sets fines and condition for permit cancellations. Usage of these devices within the city, devices allow on roadway with 25 miles and, 25 miles an hour speed limit. They are also allow on higher-speed roadway where bike lanes exist. They are not allowed on city parks. They need to adhere to speed limit. E-scooter is limited to a maximum of 15 miles an hour per CVC, California Vehicle Co., and they are not allowed to be ridden on sidewalks. Requirement for the shared device includes they must have GPS for tracking location, displays business name, contact information, and device ID, and finally, geofencing capability to restrict operation in certain part of the city. Under enforcement, state law applies to all riders, including helmet use, rider age, no riding on sidewalk, proper device usage on roadway. Operators' device may, may be impounded when unresolved parking or safety issue lasts beyond two hours. And lastly, operator that shows a failure to address and, and resolve complaint are subject to fines and permit cancellation. In customer service and maintenance, operators are required to provide a website, mobile app, and customer service call center that support multiple languages. Customer service needs to operate 25, 24/7, with option to communicate through email, text, and phone. For unsafe device and parking issue, operator shall respond within two hours upon notification. Deployed device must be in working condition. Maintenance information is to be provided to the city upon request. Education and outreach requirement under this program ensures that rider comply with laws related to helmet use, proper parking, sidewalk restriction, speed limit, and bike lane usage. Operator shall hold safety and education Operator shall hold safety and education outreach event for the public. Operators are also required to display applicable state law governing use of its website, on its website, mobile app, as well as its device. In regards to device parking, operator is responsible to inform user that devices shall be parked upright. They cannot be obstructing items such as sidewalk, phi-hydrant, utility post, bus stop, ADA parking, loading zone, curb ramp, driveway, and intersection site triangles. Again, operators have two hours to respond for improper park devices. Under future priority parking area, if demand for shared mobility increase in certain area, the city may designate priority parking area to support and manage deployment. These designated zone will facilitate organized parking, improve device availability, and minimize sidewalk clutter. The current typical deployment area includes Santa Clara Caltrain Station, O'Quot Santa Clara University area, Mission College area, retail center along El Camino Real, Stevens Creek Boulevard, Tasman Drive, light rail stations. Program in other city, so there are a number of jurisdiction that has bike share and scooter share. They include San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Fremont, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, Palo Alto, Berkeley, Sacramento, NMO, many more others. This slide shows the operator device deployed by fiscal year, the first year of operation in 2223, two operator, Bird and Veo operated or had a total of 1,300 device permitted in the city. In 202324 fiscal year, again, two operator, Bird and Lime, had a total of 450 permitted devices. In 202425 fiscal year, Bird, we brand as Spin, had 150 devices operating, permitted in the city. And as part of the 2526, we are finalizing a three-month permit extension for Bird Spin to continue to operate. In terms of operators' data for, by fiscal year, in 2223, there was a total, there's two operator. Unfortunately, Veo were not able to provide data for rides and trips because they ceased to operate in the city of Santa Clara in March of 2023. So the fiscal data shown here only includes Bird. And for Bird, for 2223, we had about 35,000 trip taken and totaled this travel of 41,000 miles, averaging 1.2 miles per ride. For fiscal year 2324, Bird and Lime operated in the city totaling about 25,500 trips taken, 23,000 total miles traveled, averaging .9 miles travel per ride. For 2425, I like to highlight that Bird had, their permit approved late in February 2025, so we only have data for a five-month operational period for Bird and Spin. So that equate to 500 trips total and 806 miles traveled totaling an average of 1.62 miles per ride. And this is a heat map of the most recent Bird data activity covering the period of February through June 2025. And again, highlighting... So this map doesn't show the street name, but in general, the activity area includes Santa Clara's Caltrain Station, Santa Clara University O'Quot area, Mission College area, El Camino Real Retail Center, Stevens Creek Boulevard, and Tasman Drive Light Rail Station Upcoming program modification, proposed change to take, will take effect in summer of 2025. These include open permit application throughout the year as needed, permit valid for one year from date of issuing with option for one-year renewal. Permit may also be temporarily extended for three months to close gap in operation. These changes are aimed to encourage increased operator participation. And lastly, the last change proposed is in accordance with AB 458, effective January 1, 2024, operators are required to offer liability insurance coverage for rider of shared mobility device per state law. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you so much for that report. It's very interesting information. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Jane.
Thank you, Steve. I have a number of questions. It seems like on slide 18, we had a lot of trips the first year, and then they dropped off the next year, and then they just kept dropping off. Do you have any ideas about why they dropped off? I know the number of devices decreased over time, but it wasn't commensurate to the number of trips that declined. And what I'm trying to understand is, and I know I asked a bunch of questions ahead of time, but why did companies cease to operate in Santa Clara while they're continuing to operate in cities like Mountain View and, I believe, Fremont and Sunnyvale, was it? And so I'm just, and then do you have any comparisons about prices? Like, when I looked at the prices of riding these scooters, it was very expensive. And do you have any comparisons with other cities about why their programs are successful? Are their prices lower? And what kinds of VMT reductions do they get from that? Finally, it seems like we set up the program, but then we didn't have staff to really support it. I think you said there was no staffing from DPW after that. And if somebody were to come in, what kind of guidance would we give them as to where to set up? You know, we already have heat maps. If we want to make them successful, they should use our existing heat maps to try to design a successful program. And then finally, I know we did geofencing around the stadium. What was the nature of that geofencing? And like, I know we don't allow these in our parks. Did we not geofence our parks? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I, since I was very involved with this with BPAC, I will say the idea was for first and last mile, to make that easier for people to get to and from, and so it doesn't surprise me that it's from the different public transportation hubs. But I did notice the first year that there were a lot dumped around the high school and that the understanding was, is high school students don't have credit cards and shouldn't be doing this. So I was wondering if that, if staff had any idea if that was the drop-off of us being a little bit more circumspect about who did this and holding, holding our vendors to the rules? Or did people just swap to buying their own scooter and going with their own rules? And there's not much oversight, I will just say that. That's a question for staff.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cox.
Thanks. I wondered, the 5% of devices that need to be deployed in equity priority communities, I'm wondering if there is an enforcement mechanism that ensures that the devices, when they're picked up, go back to that so that we're meeting that need? I couldn't really tell by the heat map, you know, if we were able to specify what are the equity need communities and if ridership is appropriately being used there. To go along with the previous two questions, I think one of the complaints you hear from perhaps business owners is the dropping off of scooters and not being picked up. And so if there's a two-hour time limit and then there's the risk of impoundment, do we have any kind of tiered system of, you know, repeat offenders for that, not picking up their scooters or their bikes? And could this be a reason that we are not getting interest back in this? And then finally, I think my only other question was special events at Levi's. It said that there's discretion for perhaps increasing the amount of the units on those days, but how do we inform the operators? I guess how do we make that happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Talking about Levi's, I was just going to mention, it looked like the heat map was not very hot as far as, from what I perceived from that map. And as we look at trying to mitigate some of the traffic issues around the stadium, initially, the 22 agreement had 10 of the 14 sites in and around the stadium, Mission College, and that northern or eastern part of Santa Clara. Have we gotten away from that? And if not, is there anything else that we can help those vendors and partners with trying to maybe push some of those means of transportation up in that area?
Thank you. I had a similar question. I was surprised that on the heat map, there wasn't more activity on the north side, especially near the Caltrain and, you know, the East Train Station and others, that there was more near the university and that area. And I know, I've seen so many of those when they were really prevalent around, like left at the Franklin Mall where I work, left on the streets, just thrown in the bushes. I mean, it was, they were strewn everywhere. And it seemed like they were there for long periods of time before someone picked them up. So, and then I didn't see them at all. Like, I don't see them, yeah, I just haven't seen them. I don't feel like I've seen them for a couple of years. I don't know when the last time I saw one. But I was surprised, I thought they'd be used more on the north side, so that was my question as well. How come they're not used as much on the north side? I'm sure the operators know, but I don't know what they've shared. So that's it for the questions.
Can we bring back the slide? So as mentioned in this slide, there was a significant drop in deployed device throughout the city from 20, initial deployment or permit operating year on 2223 to 2324 to 2425. So the number of permitted device, as mentioned, has declined over year. Why, operator didn't provide any specific reason for scaling back or exiting the market. They did generally cite lack of profitability, specifically for Veo. They operated in the city for a six-month period, and they cited a high level of vandalism on their devices, not in Santa Clara, but in San Jose. But they consider Santa Clara and San Jose as part of the same market. Due to that vandalism of replacement costs, they decided to exit the Santa Clara market. Also, for Bird and Spin for 25, 24, 25 year, Bird Spin didn't get the permit until February, primarily due to the consolidation from Bird into Spin. So their permit process took longer than anticipated because the name changed, legal document didn't match, so we had to go back with the vendor, the operator, multiple times to get that cleared up. So that delayed their deployment of devices in the city. Again, generally, in terms of market condition for what we see in Santa Clara is that they cite, the operators cited profitability as an issue.
Can I ask you something? Why is Santa Clara lumped in with the vandalism in San Jose? Why are we our own city?
Veo, the operator, considers San Jose and Santa Clara being right next to each other to be in the same market. So their device deployment in San Jose and Santa Clara, when they pulled out of San Jose, they decided to just take their device out of Santa Clara as well. In terms of pricing cost for riders, generally across the board, these operator operate throughout the Bay Area. I looked at the average price for rides. It generally costs about $1 to unlock the devices and between 40 to 50 cents per minute of use. However, each of the operator provide discount and promotion to lower their price and also as part of their community benefit program, they do provide 50% incentive, discount for low-income household teacher and veteran is available. In terms of VMT reduction, staff did estimate the VMT reduction based on the actual trips and distant travel by each of these devices over the, each of the fiscal year. For fiscal year 2223, Bird has estimated a 22,500 VMT reduction. For Veo, we didn't have any data, so we couldn't calculate that. For 2324, Bird had about 1,800 miles of VMT reduction, and Lime had 13,500 miles of VMT reduction. And for fiscal year 2425, covering five months for Bird Spin, we have about 1,000 VMT reduction. In terms of providing information to the vendor or future vendor who may, or future operator that may consider operating in Santa Clara, heat map is available on the city website for their use as market research. Again, I don't quite know what type of market research each of these shared mobility vendor does, but our information, rider usage metrics and data is available on the city's website. In terms of the nature of geofencings, geofencings is activated for stadium event, so we do have a geofence map here showing the area that scooter device are not permitted during a major stadium event. This is not included in the T-MOPS current stadium authority traffic management and operation plan. The lead in this T-MOP program didn't consider it would be best practice to provide safety to stadium attendee by allowing scooter, e-scooter to be in the mix of a high pedestrian, high-vehicle traffic area during stadium event. So at the current state, the T-MOPS does not permit scooter operation. That could be considered in future discussion and future update of T-MOPS, but that's where it stands right now. In terms of the question about shared mobility drop in use versus personal device being in use instead, staff have no information available to us. staff have no information available to us to, you know, kind of gleam into what's the, why the trend is low ridership throughout the city on the last three year. We can't answer to that particular question. In terms of park riding violation, that is currently under the permit program, the geofencing could be implemented in the park area, but we haven't received significant complaint from the public or to the My Santa Clara or from the vendor that that has been an issue. So that has not been put in place yet. But if it becomes an issue, that could be put in place by the operator. And in terms of usage on the north side, based on the land use, it may be associated with the higher industrial usage, higher industrial land use in the north side that we don't see many pedestrian and associated, you know, east shared scooter use along that area. But we do see a number of station access point along that, the Tasman Light Rail Station where we have scooter usage. But in general, the concentration of usage is by the, you know, central Santa Clara area, the university area, the Caltrain station area closer to the center of the city. I believe that's the other question.
Councilmember James, you have another question?
Yes. You know, we try to encourage bicycling to the stadium for events. We try to encourage people to not drive. I know when I've been to a stadium event, getting out of there was a nightmare. And, you know, getting there is pretty difficult, too. It seems to me that precluding these scooters during event days is contrary to what we want to do, to reduce traffic. And if you can geofence, you can reduce the speed of the scooter. You can just say, the scooter's not gonna go more than eight miles an hour. And then you would not have, you know, issues with accidents. But since you're already allowing people to ride their own bikes and their own scooters there, I don't see how it's any difference.
Councilmember, let me take that. Certainly, when staff looks at the transportation plan around Levi's Stadium, we can take another look at that. I do know part of that analysis included, frankly, the reality that we do not have really good bike facilities in the area of Levi's Stadium on Tasman, on Great America Parkway, on Lafayette. The reality is we are still in the city building out our protected bikeway network. With regard to, we would certainly want to prevent scooters being on the sidewalk around event day. One, we know how narrow the sidewalks are there, but also they just become so heavily impacted. And so we can look at it again, but I do know that a lot of analysis and thought went into that and really determined that it's not appropriate at this time and may cause more issues than benefits. In addition, I do not know that there are a number of bike travelers to events at Levi's Stadium. It is mainly car, ride share and other modes of transportation, but not a heavily bike-traveled destination.
The Bike Coalition has special racks put up there at events.
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Mike Lou, Assistant Director. So just to add a little bit more information related to stadium events. So when Bird first started with the city, one of the first things they asked us as they read in the guidelines, hey, can we service this stadium? So we facilitated a meeting with the stadium manager at the time. This is several years ago, PD. Ultimately, they had a lot of concerns regarding safety. So, you know, Bird had the task of going back and providing information to the city, to the stadium manager, as well as, you know, just PD in general saying, how would you operate this type of system in an environment where there's, you know, all these people walking around, vehicles trying to leave? You know, I think the other piece to mention is that a bike is somewhat different than a scooter. Because a scooter, obviously, it's an electric scooter. You push a button, you go, versus a bicycle, you have to pedal. So the notion there, and we've seen it in news articles and things like that, where, you know, scooters can consider, some consider them toys to some degree, although they are a viable transportation option, it's a little bit different. So that was the main concern coming out of those meetings. We never got anything back from Bird in terms of wanting to do it. Ultimately, we just paused that at that point because, you know, providing scooters at the stadium is pretty complicated just in, from the perspective of wanting to control usage, right? You don't want to have people using them during, like, during egress, going in different directions in parking lots and things like that. So although speed can be reduced through geofencing, ultimately, the concern was really just, you know, we're not ready for that at this point. So, but as the manager stated, if there's interest by the council, we can certainly reach back out to the manager and PD, start the conversations again. I'd recommend doing it after the major events that we have coming up because, you know, we have a lot to plan for those versus trying to add another dimension to something that, you know, is not quite vetted. And then, of course, Bird is only operating 150 scooters in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification there. So I'm gonna go to the public now to see if there's any member of the public that would like to make any comments about this. And again, this is a study session, city manager, so no action required on this. All right, is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this issue of the shared mobility program? Do we have anyone online, Assistant City Clerk? Okay, well, thank you very much for that. We appreciate the report. I don't know if there's any other closing comments. If not, we're gonna move on the agenda. All right, oh wait, Councilmember Hardy?
The recommendation was to have a note and file, and I was...
Do we need to do that? Thank you. Let me ask the city attorney, note and file?
You don't really need to do it, Madam Mayor.
All right.
It was on the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you. So thanks for noting that. No note, no note and file. Okay. Next, we have an item number six, which is a public hearing adoption. What, who's screaming at me?
Councilmember Park has his hand up.
Councilmember Park, is this on the item six?
Yes, it is. So I actually use a scooter.
Okay, you're back on item five.
Sorry, item five, yes.
We've moved on. Is there something you need to say that's important?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Again, as someone who uses a scooter and as someone who's used a scooter in other places, I've actually rented scooters just to see what things are, things are like. I know the difference between Sacramento and San Francisco. I know that in San Francisco, when you return a scooter, you have to return it to a specific area and then you have to lock it to a specific thing and you have to take a picture of it so it's in a specific area and it's locked to a specific thing. I don't, you know, you can't just return it anywhere. In fact, when I wanted to return a scooter in Sacramento to a different location, it told me, no, 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 you have to, you have to return it to, you know, half a block away, has to be there. Otherwise, we're just gonna charge you for the additional, you know, you know, we're just gonna charge you more. And I don't know if that was actually used. I do know that when we had scooters here, I know that we had bicycles implemented near the Tech Mart, that the bikes could be left almost anywhere. And I don't know if we use the same type of technology, the same type of bicycle return. The geofencing determined that it's returned in an appropriate area. Also, in Sacramento and in San Francisco, there were clearly delineated, you know, bike lanes or scooter lanes. And in fact, one of the rules was, you do not ride this on these sidewalks. And even more than just limiting speed, it's if you have your own lane, it makes it much easier to do, to do almost anything. Sacramento, the first year that I went, they did not have the scooter lanes. I took my own scooter. But two years later, they had separate lanes, not in every street, but separate lanes. So I feel like they learned their lesson. I remember going in 2021, 2022, and I could see scooters strewn about on almost every single block. But that was not true, for example, last year. And I don't know if it's because there were fewer scooters. I don't know if because there were fewer bikes. But when I rode a scooter in that city, again, I was directed exactly to where I had to park it, where I had to leave it. And if we're looking at first and last mile, it seems that that would be a good thing, which is you put it in a place that's readily accessible, like a shopping center, and it goes to another place that's, that people want to go, like a train station or a bus stop. And you would have defined locations that people would ride, you know, to and from. I don't know if that was, that was looked at. I don't know that limiting speed is the thing. I think that basically having your own lane would be a better thing than, than limiting speed or even the location. Like, if there is a lane for it to run, that would be a better thing. And limiting where people can pick up and drop off the devices also seems like it would be important. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move now to item number six, which is a public hearing, adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program, MMRP, and action on a rezone investing tentative map to allow the subdivision and development of eight semi-attached, single-family residences and associated on and off-site improvements located at 2303 Giannara Street. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's presentation will be provided by our Community Development Director. But before that, as Mayor, as you mentioned, this is a eight-unit semi-attached, single-family residential development that also includes eight individual lots and one common area lot. The proposed eight homes would not be allowed to be built under the current zoning. Therefore, a planned development change is proposed. The project meets all requirements for planned developments listed in our Classic Code, and the project on balance is consistent with the general plan and the city's land use policies. With that, I will turn the presentation over to the Director of Community Development, Afshah Hamid.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, council members and residents. Before I start my presentation, I want to acknowledge the staff in the Planning Division that have worked on this project, Daniel Subcheck, Leslie Xavier, Alexander Abbey with the City Attorney's Office. And then tonight, we also have our consultant with David J. Powers. The applicant is also here tonight, and his name is Kelly Erardi, and he's available for any questions. He does not have a presentation. So the applicant is VCI Companies, and they are requesting to construct eight semi-attached, two-story homes. This requires three entitlement actions tonight. The first is a mitigated neg deck and a mitigation monitoring reporting program. The second is a rezoning, which is required, which requires approvals by City Council. And because this is a subdivision for eight homes, it also requires a vesting tentative map. If this is approved tonight by council, this will then go on next to the Architecture Review Committee for the architecture of the project. So very briefly, the existing site is approximately 17,000 square feet. The surrounding uses to the north is a right-of-way. It's actually a substation. I went to the site today. To the south is planned development, low density. To the east is planned development, low density. And to the west, low density as well. To the north, actually, it's very close in vicinity to the stadium. And then to the west is Great America. Interestingly enough, within 1,000 feet radius of this project, 89% of the properties are already zoned to planned development, and they're built in a similar manner with townhomes and products, attached products. The general plan designation is low-density, 8 to 19 DUA. And the zoning at the time of the application was R1-6L. But since then, it was initially, the application was put in 2019. Since then, we went through a zoning code update. And so now the current zoning is low-density residential. So when we did the zoning update, we upzoned these properties as well. So the rezone scope, and I will provide a summary of the slide. The general plan is now low-density residential with 8 to 19 DUA. The zoning code was updated, and this was part of the update. The new R2 zoning allows for duplex, single-family. And to meet that maximum 19 units, the applicant is requesting a rezon to allow this multifamily. The property is requesting also a planned development, and this is to allow for the flexible standards for higher density, which would be consistent with the general plan. The proposal does meet all the zoning code requirements. So this is a rendering of the project. Giannara Street is the closest to us where the two, where the two trees are. The project proposes construction of eight semi-attached, single-family homes with rear yards. There will be two parking spaces and two additional guest parking spaces on the site. Each unit will be about 2,500 square feet. It's about, it's approximately 30 feet in height for each unit. There's a total of eight units. Seven will be market rate and one will be below market rate. The applicant is not requesting any waivers or concessions. Some of the architectural features of the project is that they will have porches with columns, horizontal lap siding and windows facing street. So as you can see, the elevation that does face Giannara, they've also articulated it with windows and the side of the units actually acts, acts like a front as well. So a subdivision is required. The proposal is for eight for-sale lots and one common parcel. This was cleared by the Subdivision Committee in January of 2024, and the subdivision map meets all the city code requirements. What you'll see is on this slide, there is a single curb cut along Giannara Street for ingress and egress, which is right here. And there is also a hammer-shaped end to the private street. There's two guest parking spots. One is right here, and then the other is right here. There's tandem, there's tandem parking for each of the units, and the access is here off this private street. So the project is meeting the requirements for parking. And also, because the project is located within a half-mile of a major transit stop, we cannot require any additional parking. So the project did go to the Planning Commission on June 11th. And at the time, the commission did recommend approval of the Project 7.0 to council, to recommend to council to adopt a mitigated negative deck, MMRP, rezoning, as well as the tentative subdivision map. A public outreach was conducted back in March, and this was a hybrid meeting. This was consistent with the city's outreach policy. And notices were also mailed to about 500 properties within 1,000 feet of the site boundary and also posted on the city's website. Approximately 10 members of the public did attend. There was comments focused on traffic and parking. The project does meet all the standards. The dwelling size, the units are similar and comparable to other planned development units that are nearby. And there was a landscape plan that was also submitted as part of the Planning Commission pact. Planning Commission package that was reviewed. And they will plant trees and also shrubs, and also pay onsite lieu for additional landscaping. A sequel review was done for a mitigated neck deck for the project, and it was circulated. And the mitigation measures are proposed for the project. In summary, the MMRP does require that the project mitigate for air quality impacts, biological impacts, cultural resources, geological impacts, and noise impacts, and those are all included in the conditions of approval. So the project is consistent with the general plan policies, the zoning codes, and the subdivision, and the city's policies as well to create more housing, and therefore, the Planning Commission, as well as staff, recommends adoption of a resolution for mitigated neck deck and MMRP, a resolution to approve the rezoning, and a resolution to approve the tentative subdivision map. And this is all subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me ask the council if there's any questions for the staff. Councilmember Hardy?
Thank you. Yeah, I read this very carefully. I wondered in those mitigation, if that, because you have airport reality noise, if that was what, part of what was contemplated when you talked about mitigation. I'm not personally a fan of tandem parking, but it can work, but I understand that that fills it. I'm wondering, from a disclosure point of view, I know we did this years ago when we allowed housing really close to where, what would be the ballpark for Santa Clara University. We just had a disclosure statement that, yes, there will be a ballpark there, because there is a stadium and there is a practice field right there. The one complaint I had from neighbors on Giannara told me they're, the 49ers play their music pretty loud when they're at practice. That wasn't the complaint. The complaint is they ask it to be clean versions of these different songs. So I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate for us to just give some kind of disclosure to potential residents that there were some noise concerns.
Oh, I was going to see if you wanted them to put, they play songs with bad words in them.
Well, I don't know if you put that in there, but I did, I did pass that on to the 49ers and said, this is something the neighbors have asked for. So I'm just wondering if we need to have some kind of disclosure for, so potential residents can make a good choice and not be surprised. Thank you.
That might be the disclosure of the property owner, but anyways, did you say, did I, was I premature? Did you have another report?
I actually, the applicant is here tonight.
I know that. We'll go to the applicant, and the applicant can choose whether or not they want to speak, but I usually go to the council questions first for staff before we go to the applicant, so.
Yes, you may go to council question.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jane?
Thank you. When I was on the Planning Commission, we had a lot of issues about parking, and I know state laws have changed quite a bit. Back in the day, we used to say that the parking garages needed to be left for parking. People couldn't fill them with junk and then create a parking issue on the street. So we actually put a condition of approval. I don't know if that's illegal now with new park, you know, parking laws from the state. I just wanted to understand that.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, so it's the councilmember Hardy and Jane's questions.
Okay. Shannon, do you have, can you respond about the airport mitigation question?
Yes. Shannon George with David Powers and Associates. Regarding the noise, there was no airport noise impacts identified. The mitigation in the MND is specifically related to construction noise and vibration, as well as the use of mechanical equipment onsite not impacting the adjacent residential uses.
And then in regards to tandem parking, it is allowed per the code, and they are meeting the code with two parking spots per unit. And then regarding the disclosure statement, I know that in other cities where I've worked, where there is sensitivity to noise next to event areas, usually it's also could be located in the real estate document that is provided to potential property owners. So it's usually disclosed in there as well. And regarding parking, councilmember Jane, it is meeting the parking requirements, and it is near transit, so we cannot ask for any additional parking beyond what is required.
Yeah, I'm not asking for more spaces. I'm just saying that we had put in a condition of approval, that garages should be used for cars and not for junk.
It's in the conditions.
Oh, it is. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to now go to the, would the property owner like to make any statements? Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Kelly Erardi. I'm the Director of Entitlements for VCI, which is located at 398 North First Street, about 15 minutes away from here. First, I want to thank the council for your time and the Planning Commission, as well as your entire staff. We've worked collaboratively over several years now, and we are happy to say that we agree with every condition that's been recommended, and I think we've agreed with everything that staff has recommended, and we're at a point where we're very excited about doing business in Santa Clara, creating eight more units, which doesn't seem like a lot, but eight is better than none, with one affordable, with a project that's blending into the community in the area. And kind of one of those things that is, we're providing a little housing for the missing middle, you would say, too. One other thing I want to say is I want to congratulate the city and the Bruins for their great performance. That was really neat to see. I'm a former baseball player many years ago and learned many life lessons in sports, and it was neat to see these young men and some of our future leaders. So with that being said, that's all I really have to say, and just wanted to thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity to do business in Santa Clara.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hearing now, so I'm going to go to the public to see if there's any member of the public that would like to speak on this item. Anyone here in the audience? I don't see anyone online. Do we have anyone online? All right. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, close public hearing.
We have a motion by councilmember Jane, second by councilmember Gonzalez, with a late second, third by councilmember Hardy, to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Public hearing closed. Someone going to indicate a light to make a motion? Okay, who is it? Councilmember Chahal?
Yeah. There's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. All right, we have a motion for staff recommendation by councilmember Chahal, second by councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Jane, your light's on. All right, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Parks, hands up. Councilmember Park?
Yes, I only want to direct, I mean, people have mentioned the tandem parking, and I think that you said that it's, director said that it meets the code with tandem parking, two parking spots per unit. I think you were talking about the parking spot requirement, but in general, I was told that the city does not like tandem parking. I think that when we look at tandem parking, the requirement of tandem parking, we generally ask applicants to look around, to find ways around the tandem parking. In this case, I mean, I know that the PD is coming in before 2023, I forgot when we changed the zoning to basically use PD for things that are above 25 acres, this is coming underneath that, but I'm seeing the parking, I'm seeing, yeah, I'm looking at the area, I'm looking at the map of the area, and I just feel that there's been a lot of changes. I remember walking this street because the city owns property on this, on the street, and everything past a certain point was going to high density. In this case, I see that, you know, maybe it's, it would be better, it's a better product than what's there now, but my concern is, is just, you can see the march of these new properties going down this street of what used to be single-family homes. Just a concern, but again, was there anything that could have been done? I mean, was tandem parking really the only way that you could, you could resolve the two units per unit, two parking spaces per unit requirement?
Let's ask our community development director.
So it is allowed by our zoning code.
It's allowed.
I know it's allowed, and I heard that, but I'm saying that in the past, like anyone who's gone to a Planning Commission meeting in the last decade, two decades, that's heard the word tandem parking, kind of gets the impression, the general idea that the city doesn't like tandem parking.
Then we should have disallowed it at the right time, but it's allowed, so.
No, I understood. My question was, were other options looked at, other than tandem parking?
So I just quick, briefly asked the applicant, and during the design of the project, they did work with the city and collaborated with the city on the design, and, you know, in addition, our new zoning code does support tandem parking.
Thank you very much. Okay, city clerk, would you like to read back the motion, please?
Yes, the motion is staff recommendation. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Jane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much on that one. Moving on to item number seven, public hearing, another public hearing, approval or action on a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, general plan amendment, rezoning, and a tentative subdivision map for the Cheney Street Town Home project to be comprised of up to nine residential units. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and council. This project meets all requirements of the R2 zoning district, and the project is compliant with the proposed low-density residential general plan land use designation. The Planning Commission recommended approval, and our Director of Community Development, Afshah Hamid, will present as well.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Okay, I am back. Okay, so this project is similar to what we just saw, and it's actually very close to where the other project was, the Giannara one. All right, so let me go through this. I do want to acknowledge staff first, so Alexander Abbey in the city attorney's office, Steve Lee is the senior planner who worked on this project, along with Leslie Xavier, the planning manager, and for the sequel consultant, we have Shannon George with David J. Powers here. The other thing I just want to say is, as with all these projects, they are reviewed by a number of staff, including Public Works Department, as well as their traffic division. Okay, so the applicant is Saul Flores, and he is with Marty Builders, and they are here tonight, and they are requesting to construct nine residential units at 4249 Cheney Street. And in order for this entitlement to occur, the actions required are four actions, a mitigated neck deck and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, a general plan amendment, and this would allow the land use designation from very low-density residential to low-density residential, which would basically kick it up a notch to 8 to 19 dwelling units per acre, so allowing for a little bit more intensity, a rezon from single-family residential to low-density residential, or R2, to allow for that increased residential density, and a tentative subdivision map for the condominium subdivision for up to nine units, and they are also proposing off-site improvements. And then the project would be heard at a future development hearing for the architectural review, similar to the project you heard before. So the existing site is .51 acre site. The surrounding is one, two-story, single-family duplex and multifamily residences. The current zoning is single-family, and the current general plan is very low-density residential. The project site is within vicinity of other multifamily and town home development projects. This site also is, to the north is the stadium, and then to the west is Great America. Okay, so the context and the surrounding uses. Agnew Park is here, the project site is right here, this is .51 acres. Two projects that triggered the Historic Landmark Commission review. One is located right here, and it's a former school that is now actually as a single-family residence. And then there's another project here, which is a historic home as well. So these two projects, because it was within the vicinity, triggered the Historic Landmarks Commission review. And then there are existing townhomes, so you can see by these gold dots, which are not that clear maybe, but these gold dots right here, so a gold dot here, and a gold dot here, there are other townhome projects and multifamily projects in the vicinity, and there's a church right here. So in February of 2025, the HLC did review this project with compatibility for the neighborhood and the city's design guidelines, and they made a recommendation to approve the architectural review, except they made the change for a lighter color scheme to lessen the contrast of the front elevation, and that has been updated, and that's what you are seeing tonight. So this is the project site right here, and as you can see, it is vacant. You can see the adjacent townhomes in the back. This is, the single-family home is right here, and then the former school, which is now being used as a single-family residence, is right here. Cheney Street is right here. So the general plan amendment, it is a change from, to a low-density residential. The low-density residential supports a range of dwelling types, detached, single-family townhome, or row home with a density of 8 to 19 dwelling units per acre, and the project is proposing 17 dwelling units per acre. And on the balance, the amendment allows for nine attached, single-family townhomes, which is consistent with our general plan. So the rezon, in order to allow the nine attached units, the project does need to rezon from single-family to low-density, and the new zoning will maintain a residential-like character. The proposed two-story townhomes would be compatible in height and consistent with standard- and consistent with standards, development standards such as setbacks, height and lot coverage, as well as parking. Uh, the subdivision map, uh, two vacant lots are being combined and then subdividing for condominium purposes for the nine for-sale townhomes. And the map also includes a private L-shaped street. And the subdivision uh clearance committee uh did clear this project in June of 2024. Uh, the site plan here, uh, the project is basically nine two-story townhomes. Um, so there's um a total of four here that face Cheney Street and then a total of five that are towards the back. There is an L-shaped internal access drive. Um, and the ingress egress would be off Cheney Street. There are two um guest parking spots here and as well as here. Um, this one is meeting the um uh parking requirements with two parking spots for each unit. Uh, there will be off-site improvements, including a new landscape and a landscape strip. Uh, this is what the project looks like, the elevations. Uh, the proposed ma- uh project matches the two-story hip reforms. Uh, and it includes wood siding and stucco and it will be in harmony uh with the neighborhood. Um, each unit does have a second-story window and it's oriented towards the front and the back uh is similar to the surrounding neighborhoods. So there is a lot of sensitivity to the design approach of this project. Uh, for the affordable housing, um, for residential dwell uh units, developments fewer than 10, the Affordable Housing Ordinance requires either one affordable unit or the payment of an in-lu fee. And the applicant has elected to pay the in-lu fee uh prior to uh occupancy certificate of occupancy. So the project is consistent with the general plan. And it's compatible with the surrounding land uses with a mix of density from low to medium density. And it was determined to be consistent uh with the general plan by the planning commission. Uh, the project is proposed to be consistent with development standards applicable to R2 zoning and that was determined to be consistent by the planning commission. Uh, public outreach was conducted in October of 2024. Um, and two members of the public attended the meeting and they made comments regarding uh the parking, construction timeline and cost of the units. Uh, the applicant did explain the parking arrangement and the construction timeline. And these will be listed as market rate units. Um, and a support letter was received prior to the planning commission as well. Uh, the SEQA, um, uh, the evaluation does take into account uh the potential environmental impacts, uh, and that is in the mitigated neck deck. And it's been um prepared in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act and it was also circulated for public review for 30 days. The mitigation measures are also proposed and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared as well, and these are also in the conditions of approval. The planning commission recommendation, the PC did discuss the importance of additional housing in the area and across the street. Um, affordable housing, uh, the development regulations, infrastructure impact and the proposed housing. The planning commission approved it 7-0. So based on the planning commission's recommendations, the city's general plan policies, the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, and also to help achieve the city's goal of provided much-needed housing and a variety of housing. Um, therefore, staff recommends um that the council adopt a resolution for mitigated neck deck and mitigation monitoring reporting program. Uh, general plan amendment to change the land use to low-density residential. Adopt a resolution um to allow for R2 low-density residential and adopt a resolution approving the tentative subdivision map. Um, and the, and the conditions of approval. And the applicant is here, uh, they do not have a presentation, but they're here for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm gonna ask now if the council has questions. Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, I see the applicant has elected to um uh pay the in-lu fee rather than bill on-site affordable housing. How will the city use that in-lu fee?
That's your question.
Um, I believe, and city attorney, you can um help me here, but I believe that fee is placed in a fund and when we have future projects, we use that um in-lu fee to support any future um projects that may come up where there's a gap. Uh, and then we use that funding towards uh future affordable housing projects.
Sounds correct. All right, thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna ask the applicant if you'd like to say anything. You, please feel free to come forward, you have some time.
As well, uh, first, thank you for having me. Um, I know it's late, so thank you for being here. Um, I would like to um give a special thanks to uh Steve Lee. Uh, he was uh very important to our pros- the process and the progress of this project. Um, that um, he definitely, I think, went above and beyond what other planners have done in other cities and counties with me. So I definitely want to extend that thanks to him. And I want to thank the council members as well as the mayor and staff for being here and staying at such a late stay for us. Um, if there's any questions uh for the project, I've worked on it for many years, uh, actually started in 2017. So um, it's nice to arrive and be here for the conclusion of it. We're also the builders, um, so we're the developers and the builders. Um, so we'll stay with the project um through the construction process of it.
Right. And thank you for the shout out to Steve Lee.
Absolutely.
Always nice to hear about our staff. All right, so it is a public hearing, so I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public uh that would like to speak. If so, you can come forward. Anyone here? Anyone online? Uh, councilmember Jane.
Second.
So we have a motion by councilmember Jane, second by councilmember Gonzalez to close the public hearing. City clerk, when you, if you want to repeat that.
Yes, a motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously.
Now, motion to.
Uh, can you put your light on just because that's our policy? Councilmember Jane.
Motion for staff's recommendation on those four items.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Jane, second by councilmember Shawal. Oh, Gonzalez, oh, I almost got that wrong. For staff recommendation.
Motion on the floor is staff recommendation of one through four.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you for staying late as well. We appreciate your patience and good luck with the project. Thank you. All right. Last item we have on this agenda for this evening is item number eight, another public hearing. Adoption of a resolution confirming the weed abatement report and ordering the cost of abatement to be special, to be a special assessment on the respective properties described therein. Uh, city manager.
Yes.
Are you gonna say something?
I will say this is your last item before your council recess and so I will just turn it over to acting uh deputy fire chief.
Obviously, we have more items after this, city manager. One, two, three more items.
This is your last action item.
Very good, thank you.
Keep me on my toes.
Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. Jen Panko, acting deputy chief for the fire department. Um, I also have here with me tonight and available for any questions, fire chief Ruben Torres, fire marshal Jake Tomlin. And via Zoom, we have the county weed abatement program manager, Garrick E. O. Silveski. Um, so for before you tonight, I don't have a PowerPoint, so it's, I'll be quick. Um, is the third and final step in the 2025 weed abatement process. The first step, declaring weeds a public nuisance, occurred at the council meeting on February 25th. The second step, ordering the abatement of the weeds, occurred at the public hearing on March 25th. And then this public hearing tonight is required to adopt the resolution confirming the report provided by the county weed abatement program on June 12th of 2025. And ordering the cost of the abatement to be a special assessment on the respective properties taxes. This public hearing provides the public an opportunity to object to the inclusion of properties in the county's report. It also allows the council to modify or confirm the report and order that the cost of the inspections and abatement be added as a special assessment to the respective properties. Staff recommends that council consider all written and oral testimony presented at this, at this public hearing, make any necessary and appropriate modifications to the property lists presented, and take action to approve the weed assessment report to be sent to the county assessor for implementation of the assessment amounts listed in the report. That is the end of my presentation and we are available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to speak on this item. There's no one uh to speak here in the chambers besides our staff. Is there anyone online? All right. Would someone like to put their button on and make a motion to close the public hearing? Who is this? Okay, that would be councilmember Gonzalez.
Request to close public hearing.
We have motion by councilmember Gonzalez, second by councilmember Shawal to close the public hearing. City clerk, if you'd like to repeat that. Motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane. Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes. Does anybody want to make a motion for staff recommendation? Turn on your light.
Well, moved.
Councilmember Gonzalez. Motion and a second. By councilmember Shawal. This side of the room is wide awake. And it's appropriate we end our session in the weeds, right? All right. Very appropriate.
So recommendation is staff recommendation, I mean, the motion on the floor is staff recommendation. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Shawal.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy. Oops.
Yes.
Councilmember Park.
Oh, councilmember Hardy, your hand's up.
Yes, it was up.
I didn't see it. We didn't see it.
I wanted to make the point that when someone seconds, if they're not close to their microphone, it is impossible online to hear.
That's why I repeat, who's made the second.
And I will say, half of the owners that were on this list are not Santa Clara residents. That was an observation.
Okay, where were you in the voting, city clerk?
Councilmember Park.
Yes.
Councilmember Jane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
And Mayor Gilmore.
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Reports of members' special committees and councilmembers' zero thirty requests. Do we have any? Councilmember Jane.
Uh, yes, I have three things to report. Um, the first is on June 30th, APTA had a rail conference in San Francisco that I attended and they had somebody talking about the transportation requirements for the LA Olympics. They said that se- 15 million people will come to LA in 2028. Um, there's gonna be a torch relay through all 50 states. A Super Bowl has 100,000 spectators, but the Olympics is seven Super Bowls every day. And this, they're gonna have the Olympics and the Paralympics together over 30 days. So basically, seven Super Bowls every day for 30 days. They're gonna build a closed transportation system for all the athletes. And uh, they're gonna have basically 10,000 workers just working on transportation alone for the Olympics. They currently only have 20,000 employees in all of the LA transit system. Honda is gonna provide 4,900 vehicles. There's gonna be 2,500 coach buses and 3,000 drivers and mechanics dedicated to the LA Olympics. So, you know, we have not quite the same scale, but we will have um our FIFA and our um, just to put in scale. So I asked the question is, who's gonna pay for this? And they didn't have an answer, so. Then um, on uh July 9th, I attended the Civic Well Climate Conference. That was at the San Jose Convention Center and um couple of things stood out there. Um, first is that um James Cho from MTC, MTC covers 101 cities. He says that they, they have a fund for $20 million for electric bike share. They fund Baywheels, which is the electric bikes um provided by Lyft in San Jose. And they provide $30 million for EV charging infrastructure. Uh, the other thing that came out was that not very many cities do uh inventories of their greenhouse gas emissions. 50% of jurisdictions have never done, in California, have never done a greenhouse inventory. 25% um have not updated since they first did it and then 25% are in the process of updating that, so. I think we need to um start doing a greenhouse gas inventory for the city. Thank you. Oh, and the last thing is, um, I know there were a number of people asking me for a zero thirty, for an RFP, for blocks A and B. Um, I'm now hereby formally requesting that we um look at that. Um, I don't know when it's going to be agendized. We, we have to agendize the zero thirty and vote on the zero thirty. That will probably be in August and then who knows when we can get a staff report and, and move forward on that, so. That is uh my recommendation.
Is that something to be voted on?
Not at this time, we're gonna vote on it probably at the next meeting.
I see. All right. Uh, councilmember Park.
Yeah, my, my request was also gonna be for the uh zero thirty on uh downtown, so I think, I believe councilmember Jane has got that covered, thank you.
All right, uh, city manager, executive director, report.
No report.
Thank you. Um, before we adjourn, I'm going to ask that by consensus, we adjourn in memory of Rusty Wells. Rusty N. Wells II of Santa Clara passed away after nearly 90 years of piloting the planet in his airplanes. Rusty was raised in Bakersfield and met his wife Barbara while attending Texas A&amp;M as an engineering student. Rusty's passion was flying and building aircraft. He was an avid supporter and member of the Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter 62 and 110. On the first Thursday of every month, you would find Rusty shopping for the best hot dogs and large tub of ice cream. dogs and large tub of ice cream. Rusty was a mechanical engineer and worked at Ultratech from 1973 to 1985. In 1985, Rusty, John Servie, Dan Washer, and Jim Hendry decided to start their own business, Accord Technologies, specializing in high-pressure computer disk cleaners that supported the early semiconductor businesses. Rusty's brilliant mechanical engineering innovations brought automation into the semiconductor manufacturing industry during the mid-1980s. Rusty invented the disk printer that allowed disk manufacturers to label their disks, a first in the industry. Rusty Wells has left an indelible impact on the city of Santa Clara and will be missed by all that knew him. And so with that adjournment, this meeting is adjourned. See you in a month here at a council meeting.